This work session of the Des Moines City Council is called to order. Do we need the clerk to take role?
I'll take the mic for Laura.
Normally we don't, but I can.
But if we don't, if we normally don't, then we don't need to and we'll just we'll just proceed. I want to make sure that Councilmember Bozen, I believe, is on the phone.
Yes, I am. I can hear you.
Okay. And just so you know, we have Councilmember Voss, Westergaard, Gatto, and myself all present in the chamber. With that, we have one item for our agenda this evening, and that is to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act dollars and the use of those funds. I think we will let the city manager set the table and turn it over to him to get things going.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Potem, council members, members of the public. Thank you for taking this time to set aside to have this conversation about the ARPA funds that are going to be, that are available to the city of Des Moines. There have been quite a bit of input received at the city over the last year and even a little bit more when this was contemplated. And we have come to the point where we are presenting a starting case of how those funds could be allocated. And we're going to hear from Finance Director Nick Shaw on some more details of that. But I wanted to set the stage with there's, there's not a need for tonight to have a final decision on how all the funds are being allocated. What we want to have is the buckets to be established and make a decision on an ability to allocate funds to each of the five buckets. Secondary to that, I would like to have input as to if some of the projects can move forward quickly because some of these have implications yet this summer and maybe even into the fall that need some planning time. So I'd like to get some input on some of those as we get later into the conversation. And then, of course, if there are any items that for political reasons you've decided it's just not good to even remain on the list, obviously, I need to know that. And so with that, I think I'll go ahead and turn it over to Nick for some of the details. I'll insert myself with more detail as necessary as there's questions. I would offer up to that, obviously, in these conversations, there may be a need for more research on aspects of some of these. So feel free to ask those types of questions as well if there's more work that staff need to do to bring back more information. So thank you for this time. Nick, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. See, Mr. Scott. As Scott alluded to, we're going to be kind of talking about the American Rescue Plan Act and kind of some of the beginning information about, about that just for a reminder of that process and what we've, what we've done so far. And then also get into an expenditure policy and kind of that framework that we want to be able to move forward with some of the items as well as just kind of have that discussion at that council level. When I go into kind of the general information on the American Rescue Plan Act, if just as a refresher, the funds that we received are based off of that state and local fiscal recovery funds. That was allocated $350 billion of that allocation. The city of Des Moines actually got just a little over 94.8 million. With that, there is very specific timelines that we have to work with, with these funds. There is a commitment that the council has to have by the end of calendar year 2024. And those, and the funds have to be spent by the calendar year of 2026. Now, from commitment, you will see kind of, you have varying degrees. So from the commitment aspect, we're going to have the council take action on different items and we'll kind of get into that a little bit, a little bit further down in the presentation. Now, there is a lot of reporting requirements with these funds. Obviously, it's a very large dollar amount for what the city has. We have reporting requirements quarterly that is due to the Department of Treasury that we do have, are going to have available for everybody to see off of our budget website. Those currently that we've had to submit thus far have shown that we haven't spent or committed any of the funds. We are starting to get to that point where you'll see on the next council meeting where we have a few items on there to do that. Now, from there, there's also another level of reporting requirements that are required for different spends that you do, that the different entities would have to do. A lot of those are triggered at that 10 million mark where there's a lot of additional requirements and reporting that has to happen as well. So just wanted to make you aware of some of that requirements. If allocations to a particular project goes beyond that, that 10 million.
Is that, excuse me, is that per project?
Yes.
If it's a housing project, if we give more than 10 million for that housing project?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Not the buckets that we're?
Not the buckets that we're talking about, but a particular project.
Particular project.
Yes. Then the other thing I wanted to kind of discuss as well is kind of how we're accounting for it and how we'll be reporting it. For, from a finance standpoint, it is in a special revenue fund. That's a type of fund that is very segregated from other funds. It's easily reported on and we can basically kind of track those expenses very easily and report on those. It's very similar to the local option that we have. We have those funds specifically in its own fund. Those contracts, sub awards and/or sub awards to outside entities and then transfers for different things that we have within the city. So an example we're going to get into is to like the enterprise fund or capital project funds. Those will actually transfers within city funds. So it'll go from the special revenue fund to either the capital project or an enterprise fund. And so those different items you guys will see at council meetings to actually approve those to say that those are committed. That's that level of commitment that you guys will see at, at the council action level. And then, yes.
Can we change our mind? Like, let's just say we were going to, right now, if we agreed to 5.5 million for parks and then say, oh, no, we'll just give them 4.5 and we'll give some more money to trees. Can we change our mind?
The expenditure policy that we're kind of working on right now, that's really just that framework that we're going to be working on. I would say once the council actually does like an action of doing a transfer, approving that transfer is when that commitment actually happens. So I'll let Scott kind of elaborate a little bit more.
Yeah, I think the example of the parks would be helpful to have a separate conversation if we get far enough along in today's conversation to have just, this is the lift of park project that we're anticipating, of which then some will have immediate transfers and some will probably be a few months down the road beyond that.
But so like in 2025, we can't change our mind and either?
Not if we've already spent the funds.
Well, sure, obviously, if we've already spent them, but we'll just.
But we could if we had not already spent.
From a commitment standpoint, as long as it's prior to needing it committed
Right.
by the end of 2024, in theory, if you decommit it and then recommitted it to something else, I don't think that that would have a problem. I'd have to confer with our legal department, but.
Yeah, I mean, what is commit, I mean, is commitment, having a council action and a resolution? That would be, I mean, if we voted on it, then it's committed for that, that type of funding. But if we agree and then we decided that we're going to, you know, either increase the funding or take away from, then we can do that without council resolution, correct?
Well, you would need to.
It's committed with council resolution.
Yeah, with, with.
Okay.
It'd have to be corrected, though.
Yes, we'd have to have correction to that council approval.
If we vote on it by a council action, okay.
But we don't have to commit all of this until December of 2024, so.
Yep, that is the latest that it can be committed to. And that's why when we, we came up with this concept, we tried to come up with the expenditure policy, which if you guys can recall back to December of 2018, it was actually December 4th, December 17th of 2018, 56C was actually the item number. It was kind of laid out what, what, what was that 50% going to be spent, spent on for property tax relief and kind of gave information about it for the sales tax, for the sales tax. And then it kind of said that you guys were looking at the infrastructure or police and fire expenditures. It kind of laid out what, what, what the council's direction was on how it should be spent and that we needed to do the annual report for council as well. And so this is what we're kind of working towards is actually having that document of kind of saying this is what we're seeing for those buckets. But then each individual item that goes forward would actually have to get approved. So any of these sub items that we kind of will get into further discussion, they aren't going to be committed until the council actually votes on it as a separate contract, sub award, or a transfer to our own projects or funds.
So, so we have five buckets here. Do they all have to be spread out through there or could we say, you know, just for instance, you know, we're putting it all towards infrastructure? Is that against the rules or is that, I mean?
No, no, it would be up to the council. So if, so right now, we were looking at Monday being that expenditure policy based off of kind of the input that we received and the discussion that council has had kind of what we have sitting here. But if, if that needs to get changed, it would just be another council action to change that expenditure policy. If, let's say, you were deciding to shift funds from, you know, one-time budgetary support to economic development or something else.
So which, what today, really, you're asking us is to agree that we would split this money up in five different buckets?
Yes.
And there are some of which that need to advance quickly.
Yep, like, for example.
But you're not, you're, we're not pigeon into how much in each bucket right now.
Nope.
Well, but we're given a guideline for Monday's vote.
So does that mean when we vote on this, that social and environmental justice services and, and health gets, I don't know what that cost. It does get that close to that sum.
And we add it a little just for flexibility between the different.
And then it's going to take council action to change that? If we didn't want to put so much into that and we wanted to put it in something else, it would take another council action?
Yeah.
We should have had a lot more discussion than just two days.
Oh, it can wait. We're just, I would like to have some guidance to see how far along we can get for the bucket.
One of the big things that we have wanting to go forward are some transfers that you guys will see on Monday as well, that you'll see are within the, like, parking fund is a good example. There's a 3.5. That's one where they got hit very, very hard. And we would like to take care of that transfer before the end of the fiscal year. And so.
That's what these funds are supposed to be.
Yep. Well, this is, that's the only, that's the only one from a city standpoint that we're actually using specifically for the loss of revenue.
But that is the loss of revenue that we.
That is a chunk of what we have for it. Yep.
Fully in agreement with that.
And so we were trying to take that, that expenditure policy framework that we, or procedures that we did under the local option to kind of apply to these funds as well.
Yeah, but we don't even know what, what projects we're even considering on a lot of these things. These are very gender, these are very general buckets that is just, you know, we're, we're saying that we're going to give $15 million for this bucket, but we really don't have any projects.
That's what tonight's for. Yeah, we're going to get into that a little bit.
Okay.
I don't know what else Nick has for presentation, but let's get into that. And then we're going to have a conversation about some of these buckets. And I'm sure we've all got thoughts on how we would rearrange some things.
Do you have this document later?
So the, the next point, the last point that I wanted on this particular side is kind of the eligible uses. We've usually used the terms of restrictive versus non-restricted. And the best way to kind of, kind of talk about that is kind of those infrastructure, public health, negatively economic impacted spends, the, and then the non-restricted, which is general services that we can spend it on, which is only to the extent of revenue losses that we can prove or, or report to the Department of Treasury. And so from our standpoint, not just what, what we're going to kind of talk about here is the, the different buckets. We also have to make sure that these funds are actually falling into those restricted versus non-restricted funds. So the non-restricted funds is only based off of the amount that we can show as a revenue loss. And then, and then we can use that on any general services of the city.
And how much is that?
And that's 3.5 million for the parking?
That's the only one that we're actually showing for that, that type of. We can do that for, for other services that isn't actually directly related to the revenue loss itself. It's just you can pay for general services up to the dollar amount of what you lost, what we lost. And I think right now we are looking at, I can't remember what we are with the fiscal year '21 since we're not quite done and we have some accruals to work with. But the first two fiscal years, we're about that 30 to 35 million of revenue losses.
So, so essentially, we can allocate 30 to 35 million for unrestricted to the general services that we would make up for the revenue loss that we have.
Yeah, so, so a good example of some of the infrastructure that would be under the restricted would be kind of the broadband and sanitary and storm sewer work would be, would be a restricted use that we can use it for. And then.
But you're saying the non-restricted is 35 million?
Up to. But some of the categories that we're seeing here, we're using those as, as general services that fall under that category that we would be able to spend general fund money on if it isn't, doesn't relate or doesn't fall under the categories of restricted. So like, like affordable housing for low and moderate income, that would be a restricted use. And then, but something like.
It would be a restricted.
Would be, yes, would be a restricted use. But like, like solar panels might not be.
So for example, we could use all of the money under that. And because it's, it covers the restricted use, that would be an acceptable.
Yes, that would be an acceptable.
If all the benefits are occurring to low and moderate.
Yes. There's different things like qualified census tracts for investments that would fall under restricted spends as well. And so different things that, that we're going to kind of get into for, for different possibilities to spend, some might be, so like for parks, if the, if the park, park land is within like a qualified census tract, that could be restricted. But if it's outside, then it would be a non-restricted cost.
Right. Same thing for, for example, like trees.
Yes.
If we just focused on creating a tree canopy in qualified census tract, areas that we know tend to have a disparate impact there and have less of a tree canopy. If we just focused on that area, that would all be.
Restricted in nature. Yep.
And covered under that restricted.
Yeah, and so that's why it's kind of hard when you look at the amounts to be able to say this is 100% restricted or unrestricted. It's one where that's going to be on us when we go to report and, and track what we're actually spending and doing, whether it falls under the restricted realm or the unrestricted realm.
Nick, before you get rolling, I thought when we first started talking about this, we were going to peel off around $10 million to go, to go to the airport. Is that?
That was.
Is that in here someplace or did that get changed or what happened?
It had to get changed because of the timing of the commitment and spend.
So when they didn't get the full allotment they were hoping from the state and federal funds, it has put a lot of question as to, you know, what, what are they going to have to change about the project and the timing of the project to get it done? It puts at risk the ability for them to commit by 2024.
Okay.
And then, so what we'll have to do, if that's an avenue that we are going to continue with, we'll have to look for a different way to, to facilitate that, those funding of, of the airport, which may, may be avoiding debt issuance with some of our commitments on ARPA and then allowing that debt issuance.
All right. So we still have a $10 million commitment to the airport project. We just can't use ARPA dollars to do it.
Unless they, unless they suddenly got funding.
Because like it was a drastic gap.
Probably in the next six months to nine months, then we could probably shift it back. But this is being designed with zero dollars of ARPA going into airports. So if, if suddenly there was a desire to do that, we'd have to take 10 million off this list some.
But, I mean, essentially, you figured out how to maintain our existing budget and find that 10 million. Some of that is already reflected in some of the commitments.
True.
That might be in this, in this list.
And to close that discussion, for instance, parks, there's going to be an allocation for parks. Part of that is going to be existing projects that are already in the CIP that we're going to have debt service issued. If we can use some of this ARPA funds, it will free up the debt service to be used for the airport. Does that make sense?
All right, I got it. It's, that's challenging to explain to the general public.
Well, the general public needs to know is we're spending it on parks. And then, and we know that it's given us the capacity to, to handle the airport in a different way.
So as we get into kind of the, the categories of funds, to kind of, and we'll kind of go into kind of more of the, more of the bullet point. This is kind of the expenditure policy that we kind of drafted for Monday night based off of the discussions that we've had. If you, if, if you are finance-based person, you probably will go right into adding them together. They do not equal the 94.8. They're pretty close. And that's why we did the not to exceed to kind of give us a little bit of cushion based off of what we plan to do versus when the actual expenses go out the door. It's fairly close to that. As you can see here, infrastructure improvements is kind of on those, those items would be that broadband, stormwater, sanitary improvements. Going into the, the other categories that we have here, we can kind of go into the detail of the handout that we have, but I just kind of want to run through kind of those five main categories real quick. And then kind of we go back to each one and actually facilitate that, that discussion between the council. So then.
But, but this list you gave is, is, I added it up, it's less than 94 million, a million off.
Yeah, it, it's one where we could technically still, if, if things come in where we commit for a contract and there's like a change order or things like that that can go on. This is, this is a draft right now and, and from that standpoint, we don't want to commit or overcommit on what we, like, like the bottom of the sheet says, it's a draft as of today's date.
But you're, you're going to ask us Monday to commit 16 million for infrastructure, 35, almost 36 million?
I'm, I'm actually, we're on the blue letter, I'm.
Which is a little higher.
The blue letter and the roll call that you guys are going to see on Monday is actually these different categories, which is the overall category. The specific projects under those, we're not really moving forward until they actually go back for council approval. So like a good example. I don't know if, or I can switch to this screen.
So the last category is the unrestricted one, the 14.5, where actually things were affected by the COVID.
That's.
Revenue was lost and.
I, I, I think you're, I think you're kind of confusing the restricted, non-restricted.
Those are non-restricted, right?
There's a mix.
It, there's a mix throughout all of the categories. So.
So, so this one is not this one time?
The parking fund?
All, this, all of these.
No, there is like Bravo. I don't know if Bravo would have qualified.
I don't remember, I don't remember if that qualifies or not.
And this city facility is just questionable.
And water trail.
Yeah.
So depending on like the water trails, the regional features, if that's within the qualified census tract, that could be. So depending on like the water trails, the regional features, if that's within the qualified census tract, that could be restricted.
And this is additional to the, this isn't part of the six million that we've already committed to water trails. This is an additional three million.
It may not be a contribution aspect, but it's also kind of maybe our.
Or is this going to be used as part of the six million?
I think this is for city.
This is for additional commitments that we're likely to, to have on us in the peripheral of the water trails improvement. So we think about roadways that need to get to the water trail sites. Um, lighting, additional parking lots. At one point there was discussion of possibly restrooms at some of these sites. Those, those are very likely commitments that we'll end up with, obligations that we'll end up with as the water trails move forward, especially as the water trails are successful. And we have more people going to those sites and saying, well, why isn't there more trash containers and, and more parking and lighting and everything else? It's, a lot of that are items that were value engineered out of the original water trails.
Yeah, I understand.
Right. So it's us picking up more tab, but not getting credit for picking up more.
Right.
Oh, we're going to get credit for picking up more.
But it will be, it'll be us doing the work with these funds.
Yeah.
But this goes, it, this, this being displayed up here is, is a more detailed kind of idea of the expend that beyond what, what is going, that it would be brought up to council, um, that, that's on that expenditure policy. So these are ones where in, in theory, if you were going to have something go forward that was a part of the affordable housing, let's say of that nine million, if there is an allocation of two million of that, you might see that as a contract, uh, going to council to be approved as a, as a funding from ARPA. So as you see, uh, as some of these things move forward, as we continue the discussion, they might be adjusted. Um, if the amount not to exceed changes drastically, then yes, we would have to come to council for a change to that expenditure policy, just, just like we would with the, uh, local option. If, if we are deviating from, from that expenditure policy, we would have to get that expenditure policy altered or, and approved by council.
So can I, can I ask what, with the economic development, what is going to be the criteria that's going to, uh, some of these projects that are going to, I mean, how do we even, is it on, do you have that in your?
Why don't we go top to bottom if we can from this list? And we can give you what detail we have at the moment and then we can determine if there's.
I just know when I look at that $500,000, the neighborhood commercial revitalization with the blighted buildings that I would say all over the city. I mean, 500,000 isn't going to get you very far.
Right, right. So you're going to find that some of these other categories are going to.
So, okay. So from the very top, you have the infrastructure improvements that we have from allocation. Uh, the broadband is, is, is one item that is restricted in nature. Water contributions, um.
But let's, let's go through this.
Sorry.
Yeah. So what, what is broadband? Yeah.
So broadband is two-part. There, there's going to be an opportunity to work with DMAC and some of the actual telecom providers to get more education out to, uh, uh, lower income neighborhoods and, uh, more distressed neighborhoods that either don't have broadband today or may, uh, need some, uh, better understanding of the benefits of high-speed internet.
Is there, is there neighborhoods in our city that don't have high-speed internet? Either from CenturyLink or, or MediaCom or the new company coming in?
Not by the, not by the newest standards. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So what might've been high-speed internet 10 years ago, yes. But there is not, the key here is there's not fiber to the homes in all of our neighborhoods. Right now with the existing providers, it's less than 20% of our neighborhoods have the full benefit of fiber optics. Okay?
Okay.
And so, go ahead.
Sorry. I, I think. Do we have a way to share the, the more detailed document with?
I think it's right here.
In the room, but also maybe online. They were all up front.
Uh, I mean, usually God bless Kay. She always had a post.
Well, we'll be sure to post this document as well.
It'll be posted up.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, the educational piece is, is part of that. And that's likely to not be more than three or 400,000, hopefully even less than that. The main part of that 1.5 million is to reserve for at least, I would say probably one more year because we have active providers, including MediaCom, MetroNet and Google that have given every indication and actually started in some cases, building fiber out to the community. I want to give them some time, again, about a year, to see what their final build out is going to look like. And if there are any neighborhoods in Des Moines that are going to be underserved and not have the same fiber network. If they, if there are going to be neighborhoods unserved, I'd like to put at least a million dollars of this, this funding on the table with an RFP process to say, we're willing to put a million dollars towards building out that last neighborhood or two.
Okay.
And that's only if the private industry doesn't take care of it, which I have a feeling they will because now there's three of them and potentially a fourth that is looking at fiber. So now suddenly we have everybody building fiber.
And.
What, what, what neighborhoods don't, sorry, what, what neighborhoods don't have internet in their neighborhood?
So again, there's a difference here between internet and high-speed internet. And I'd have to look, is it 20 megs up and down? There's, I can get you that, but there's, there's a nationally defined high-speed definition now. And over half, well, probably about half of our, our city's probably not served with that in a reliable fashion.
Okay.
I don't think we do.
Probably should do that.
I, but yeah, we can check on, on if we've even had problems with not doing fiber. I'd be, I'd be curious to know how, how much COAC versus fibers going into new neighborhoods myself. We'll, we'll check on that.
We have some new neighborhoods that don't have any internet. Right.
Brand new homes?
Brand new homes. No internet. I can't believe it.
That's awful. Okay. All right.
All right. So that's broadband.
Okay.
And there, there are federal infrastructure dollars available for broadband separate from this as well, right?
Right.
Are we, are we working, are we working with our federal partners to make sure we're identifying those dollars and?
So those are.
Looking at how we can draw down those dollars as much as possible as well.
Those dollars are available to private entities that actually provide, uh, the services. And so I've had those conversations with each of the providers. I have a feeling that is why there's more interest right now in the, in the build out because they, they're likely to be getting some of those funds.
Okay.
And this, I mean, I've, I've heard the state talking about, you know, making sure every.
Their state funds as well.
Yeah. Every community has, uh, fiber and, and broadband. And I mean, I would hope that we're included in that and it's not just rural Iowa.
The way those rules that the state were written, rural Iowa benefits from most of that funds because they may not have anything beyond copper, COAC, which is.
But you're telling me some parts of our city doesn't even have that?
They do. They all have internet. It's just not the high speed. Twisted Pear Copper is not able to provide the high speed necessary for the new. You have to have fiber at least into the neighborhood and then only the last several hundred feet of COAC.
Okay. For it to be at that.
To be at that high level.
Okay. Um, the next item under that is, is water, um, water infrastructure. Um, this may be working with the Des Moines Water Works as we go through additional street projects. Um, there's been a need, I think there's a need that we have received from them on kind of the level of infrastructure that we've been doing as a city and then, um, being able to, uh, do their water, uh, lines as well in comparison to how much we're doing so we, our, our residents don't see it two, two, three years down, down the road, getting ripped up again for, for water work being done as well.
Will they reimburse us that money?
That is the plan is that this would be some kind of revolving loan for them, that they could use it on a project. Okay. Maybe a zero percent loan, something of that nature. The key here is we have been, the council has been so committed to road reconstruction that Water Works doesn't have the capacity to keep up with replacing the water lines as we replace roadway. And there's other capacity issues as well.
Okay.
On the, on the water work side.
Just so long that we're going to, a revolving loan is fine, but we're, we're not paying for water lines being put in for the Des Moines Water Works and we're not going to be reimbursed. I'm not interested in using any ARPA funds for that.
Is that consistent?
We need to be reimbursed for that. That is part of their commitment.
Right, but understand.
To us as, as we go through and we redo it. I mean, that's their infrastructure. We don't own Des Moines Water Works.
Understood, but the, what we don't want is our new streets get torn.
No, I understand. And that's why I'm fine with, with, but it's still there. If, if we're going to do this street, they need to.
I've got, I mean, I get what you're saying. I, I'm willing to have a little more flexibility, although I think they should reimburse. There is another problem that we know we have as, as a city that we don't have a solution for. It's a waterworks. It's somewhere between waterworks and city in the sense that we know that there are lead service lines out there that are just fine right now, right? Like they're not, they're not leaching lead, but they're old service lines. I, I think my house has an old lead service line, for example, that the proper thing to do over time is to get those replaced. That is a homeowner responsibility and we think there are a large number of those. Maybe the revolving loan fund or the payment back, since that is not a waterworks responsibility. It's not a city responsibility, but it will fall on our residents and be an issue. Maybe give staff the flexibility if, if it's not a revolving loan fund or an ongoing loan fund that dollars could be used to address, uh, lead service lines, particularly for those folks who are low income and would not be able to afford that, afford the replacement of the water service line to their house. That maybe solves your need. It helps invest in our neighborhoods, helps folks out. Uh, and, and is filling perhaps some of the gap that exists today. I don't know how others feel about that, but that would be something I'd, I'd be willing to consider. But I'm also supportive of helping Water Works keep up with our pace because if we don't.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
We're going to have to back off our pace.
No, I'm, I'm completely fine with helping them do our pace, but they do need to repay and revolving loan. And we can, that's a different discussion about, you know, services to, um, low income and, and folks that aren't able to pay for a lead pipe going to their home. That, that's a completely different discussion that, um, I don't, that's, that's more than we're going to be able to discuss tonight. But I understand where you're coming from, but I do, I still, that you can make it a revolving loan and if they're in agreement with that, that's fine. Are, are they in agreement with that? Have you had discussion?
Only that I was going to be talking to council about that.
Are, but are they in agreement?
Well, they'll take whatever we.
But are they in agreement paying us back as a revolving loan or are they?
If it's a 0% interest rate, if that's okay, just getting our funds back.
Yeah.
There's going to be a need for that. That saves them.
We'll have to look into the requirements within ARPA as well, if it's program income.
Do they get any ARPA funds?
Issue there?
Okay.
No, but there is infrastructure bill funds that we're working through with our legislators, uh, at the federal level. There is lead pipe replacement funds available to water utilities. And there's an issue there with qualification that, or that would try to help.
Okay.
There is other federal funds.
All right. Uh, the next area of conversation is the stormwater, um, allocation. Uh, based on, uh, we, we should be wrapping up that citywide study. Um, and then from that, these funds could go towards some of those projects that we have, um, on those priority lists that they're going to come out with that. Um, so this is currently anticipated for, for those type of projects.
Do we have that priority list yet?
I'd have to ask Jonathan on that.
Cause I know I've, Jonathan, I've had lots of discussion in areas.
We continue to address them.
Yeah.
And there factors another one on the Monday night's agenda.
Mayor Proton, members of council, Jonathan Kano, Public Works Director. We have, uh, two master plans, one finished on the sanitary sewer, uh, earlier this year. Stormwater master plan is wrapping up and intended to be done in August.
And who, who's doing the, does that include some of the troubled areas in Ward Four that you and I've had discussion about that, are we just going to, you know, we're not able to put a pipe in? Are we just going to buy some houses up and, and have retention areas and some of those?
The, the analysis on the, on the citywide scale breaks it up into 74 different areas and then analyze those on risk of failure, likelihood of failure and consequence of failure. Uh, so those places that where there is more to damage will have risen to the top. Some of the smaller places will not have filtered up there, but we also have a path to fix those way, those, those problem areas in larger watersheds that don't have the same problems, uh, watershed wide. Uh, in the same way, we, we set aside money in this, in the sanitary sewer master plan for building new trunk sewers, but then also there's a provision made for providing small pieces of sewer to places where there isn't some, uh, like, uh, in some places along in the Eastern Lake neighborhood, there are a few houses still left on, on, on septic tanks. And in that master plan, uh, we had funding for the big projects to put big sewers into service, large chunks of land. We also set aside funding for small projects to deliver, uh, relief to residents that need it. Same way with stormwater master plan. There's the looking basin wide, 74 different watersheds spread across the city. Where we know there are localized problems, we have a separate bucket, so to speak, that will be set aside to solve those problems.
And given this, why that number's a big number at eight million.
I don't know if it's big enough.
That, yeah, that's, that's kind of the point.
Until we see a list, I mean, how, how can we agree that eight's enough for that? Cause those are problems that people face continually and, and this is an opportunity that we can fix it.
Right. But as you, at the end of this conversation, then you can come back to me and say maybe a million or two.
But we, we have no, you don't, you're, you're not giving us enough details that it's not even done until August. I mean, I, there's, there's no way that I can make an educated decision if I don't have the data in front of me.
But we don't, we also don't have the luxury of just waiting till everything is, so. We've got to start from somewhere with some numbers and, and then adjust on it as we have better and better information.
I know, but you're asking us about Monday to put these buckets and then we're going to have to change.
We've got to, let, let's get through the conversation and get the information that we have tonight.
Okay.
And I mean.
Sounds good.
Cause we, we, we've got a decent amount of information. I, I've got thoughts based on my previous review of this, but I want to hear and, and get as much of this presented first.
So we do have the list of the sanitary, sanitary priorities and that's what five.
Um, with those kind of being covered together, I'll go down to the, the social environmental justice services and social determinants of health. Um, there's a lot of different categories, uh, or different projects within, within this broader category. Obviously the largest one I'll, I'll touch on first is that Northside Community Center, the Grub YMCA. Um, that one is at the nine, 9.5 million dollars, uh, for that, that particular project. Uh, the additional funding that we have, uh, that we have committed for that project was from geo-bonding as well. So in combination, that would be with the funding for that project.
Is, is that construction of it?
Yes.
And that is the $12 million project?
Mm-hmm.
That's the total. Because I know, I know there, the community is wanting more, but we're committing 12.
For the construction bid.
For the construction. Yeah. 12 for the construction.
Other money into design, but yeah.
Right.
Yep. We have 12 million for the construction. Then we also have, um, two, uh, another 2.3 million-ish of either geo-bonds or local option funds that are going into that as well. So in total we have 14.3, but 12 million is what we have allocated for the cost of, of construction.
And we haven't, I mean, this bidding, I mean, engineering bid might be 12 and it might come back at 14.
Might come back 16 or.
Right, in this time that we're in right now, I mean, when is this going out for bid?
One year from now, maybe a little more, it's it's almost two years.
Two years from now, okay. Well, we might be in a different world in two years, though.
Nick, uh, for the um community center project, does that, do we have, I can't remember if if we have to acquire land also.
The one corner piece that Jake had bought.
Oh, so, so there's gonna be an expense on that also.
Is that part of the?
Is that part of the twelve or?
Part of the twelve, is it not, or is it, it's not?
Yeah, it's part of the, part of the two point three that we have already allocated to it.
Right, so it's part of the soft cost, which is the architecture, design and the acquisitions part.
And we've already allocated those funds, that's already in our sales tax.
Sales tax and geo bonds, we did.
Okay, yep. All right. So we're we're doing the twelve million dollar project, and if it's going to be any bigger, it's coming from the community.
And those conversations have been started.
And who's?
The mayor and uh.
Okay.
And Ben.
All right.
Um, kind of a sub, kind of point, point to the the Northside Community Center too, is the the PAL or Second Chance in the building as well. That's kind of kind of programming type of thought within that as well. Uh, we kind of separated that out um as its own separate item.
Perfect.
Um, I realize I skipped the cultural centers, um, in the community cultural centers that we, that are around the city. Um, I'm, can't elaborate more on that.
I can speak to that, that's that's the Thai Dam and and there have been some other requests that I haven't had a chance to vet with you guys on potential uh community or culture centers across the city, and they're small requests. Twenty thousand here and and the Thai Dam, I believe, is a hundred thousand. And so this is a two hundred thousand.
I mean, we have a cultural center on on Army Post that, you know, they're they're struggling to get it completed.
So we're thinking this would be an application process where they would submit.
The Thai Dom, just for clarification, I put it in there, because of COVID, if you go back, the Asian population were often blamed, and they have suffered a lot of damage and a lot of vandalism and fires at their center because they were targeted, specifically targeted as, you know, because of COVID. And so that's why they came and asked for some help with getting a fence and getting some things done just so they can, you know, it's set, it's tucked back there, but they're constantly getting, you know.
Where's that located at? Where's it at?
It's up of Lower Beaver. It sits back there by the river.
Is that in the city of Des Moines?
Yeah, it's, yes, it is. It is.
By the, you can see it off the bike trail, correct? Is that, is that the one?
The bike, I think the bike trail does go through there.
There are lots of.
And and that's part of the the issue is that people go back there and it's hidden and they can set things on fire, they they've just really suffered some real serious losses.
How much is they ask for just that?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
So then we're only sitting inside another hundred for other cultural centers, is that what you're saying?
At the moment.
Okay. All right.
Hey Scott, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
This is Connie. So in this case, when they submit, are we going to pay the bill or they're gonna? I mean, if they don't need a hundred, if it comes in at ninety, whatever, how do we determine who's gonna get what? Do you say it's gonna be a bid process?
So I I think if if there's consensus support, I could have that conversation maybe even with Linda, Councilman, Councilwoman Westergaard, to get an exact accounting of how they would want to spend the funds.
They they have that, and I think I, I think I've sent it to you. It was like seventy-seven thousand for fence, and then there was another forty thousand to put in, like a security system. I mean, if they could just keep eyes on it, then that would cut down on some of the vandalism and the, you know, the the racial things that are, that are.
So part of.
Written and they're being targeted.
Sure, so I think what I'm hearing is also that we would want account, we need accountability because we have to be able to provide that to the US Treasury anyway.
Yeah.
So we'd we'd have copies of the receipts of how the funds were spent, things of that nature.
I thought I had sent that to you with the, with the bid for the, but they have that. They just need to get it done, there's just some urgency because more vandalism is is happening.
Was that the question, Councilwoman Bozen, or?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to know how we would do that because uh, you know, who are they getting this from? And who's gonna install and all those kind of things if we're putting money into it? I just wanted to make sure that, because with the cost going up, I mean, I don't know what that would be, but I just wanted to understand what the process, because there is, like you said, another hundred. So what is that going to be? So if somebody, you know, some groups are trying to do a building, but they don't have enough, so until they would have the full funding. And what are we asking the Thai Dom, how much more are they paying to help be part of it since they do own it? Too, so whatever that number is, just to have accountability, I don't know what the treasury will make.
Are are we asking for any type of match from any of these cultural cultural centers? The, or are we just asking for, tell us how much you need in 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 that case for a fence or?
What the purpose.
And what the purpose is, but there is no uh match of any sort, or just?
That's up to council stipulated though.
I I just, I didn't, I didn't know this, I didn't, I didn't know what we were doing there.
The Thai Dom is, it it's just a little different situation because, because of COVID. And I mean, I don't think I want to sit here and repeat.
Yeah, no, I got you, I heard you said.
Some of the things that have happened, but they have suffered because of COVID. They've had things happen to them because unfortunately we have people that live in our community that want to target a certain race.
Yep. I I understand completely, I.
Yeah. Library.
Yep, library is kind of a two-part. Um, one is the, kind of like the hotspot checkout type thing that that they would have access to. And then I think it was some additional projects within the library that had to get um pushed out because of cost of projects.
HVAC.
HVAC was one of them. Uh, then the next item was that violence prevention. Um, the the look that there was for um the um cure violence uh commitment that we have. This was trying to look at um a different funding source uh for for the cure violence um and free up funds for for other projects as well.
Um, so. There, that's not additional funds.
Yes.
That is to utilize these funds instead of the sales tax, I believe, is where that was coming from.
Sales tax or general, anyway, general fund, general fund was covering that cost.
So this is not addition.
No.
To what they're, I thought we committed seven hundred thousand.
Several year, it was three-year commitment.
Three, yes.
Or two. This is intended.
Was it three hundred for three years?
This is intended to get it through three years.
Wasn't that what it was, three hundred for three years?
Ben, do you have that number? Cure violence.
Was it three hundred for three years?
We'll get, we'll get that number before.
It sounds.
Per year?
So this would only cover.
Two, two of the years.
Well, already paid the first year.
Right.
That, okay, that's where the confusion was, this gets the two additional years, so the.
And is, are we? Is it still only gonna focus in three years? I I've seen the report on the news, I I know they're looking at expanding it, but I I, is it just the area that they're gonna focus on and they're gonna stay there for three years for for this, for this amount? Or are they expanding it within the next three years?
I mean, I think the budget is for the narrow area focus.
It is.
So if, if we're looking for expansions, that's a question of additional resource.
Each year, you're, they're going to give us a report and show us the data that, how successful our four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year has, has how effective that's been, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And is it not, most of that's going for salaries, though?
There's quite a bit of that.
So.
Yeah.
A large part for salaries.
Boots on the ground, as they say, yes.
Yeah. Um, the next item that's on that list is uh childcare. Um, with that, that's obviously could be a broader discussion, but I think at this point, we were looking at five million um for anything that would kind of relate under that category.
The biggest opportunity with the childcare is Des Moines Schools has presented us with a proposal that would be three-year timeframe, a little over five hundred thousand a year for classroom to get either three-year-olds or four-year-olds a full day of a teacher and wraparound uh before and after school, if you will, so that parents have the ability to work an eight-hour shift if they wanted to and know that their kids are getting eight hours of of schooling with wraparound services before and after.
I'd like for us to look at other, other programs that would also cover it besides through the Des Moines Public School.
But we did have some other requests, unfortunately, most of those, not all of them, had had some other concerns. For instance, if they're church affiliated.
Yeah.
There's concern there.
Absolutely.
But I would say if there's other potential to send it to us. Do you have any in particular?
No, I'm just, I just know that that there are other childcare is needed out there and not.
Sure.
Does it, I would hate to see us put it all in with Des Moines Public Schools.
One, and and I think Councilmember Bozen could probably address this better than than I can, but my understanding is that one of the benefits of funding this with Des Moines Public School versus maybe some of the others is the program that we provide funding for gets them the upfront costs, and then they then are able to draw down, I think, federal dollars that will allow, it's federal or state dollars.
It's leveraged.
That will allow them to continue the program after our investment. And that is unique, and we we probably cannot find a lot of other opportunities where we can leverage our investment to lead to something that will draw down dollars and create a more permanent and stable source of funding.
So that is correct.
I'm willing to explore other options, but I do really like the fact that 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 investment allows us to draw down and create a more sustainable program.
So there's two aspects, that's one of them. But on the front end, with the Des Moines Schools, with their enrollment going down, they have available classrooms. So there's very little capital investment necessary to get more capacity into the community. We're talking about some uh uh furniture and, you know, teachers' aids, materials to get the classroom up and going, and they're they're, it's labor cost at that point. So we can get an expansion easier, and then we've got the potential sustainability with other levels of government funding.
So we have a concern about starting a program, and then when the ARPA dollars go away, the.
That's what the federal funding can help.
That's the advantage of working with Des Moines Public School.
Gotcha. Okay, so that the ARPA dollars go away, that the the uh the childcare program could continue.
Right, it's the upfront investment the first time will be used to then draw down other dollars.
Gotcha, okay, thank you, Josh.
And and they didn't get it, they don't get ARPA funds either, did they get?
So this, I mean, this potentially could be nine or ten classrooms with twenty kids each. So you're talking about being able to impact quite a few families to.
I would just hope that um the school district would reach out to council and maybe have another conversation about how the city and the schools are going to work together. Because I don't, we've, we've tried that.
I can comment on, they have reached out, I think, the in-between with everything that's turned over that I have, you know, that we can set up something, but I think in this case, on preschool, every year a child takes the advantage or a parent can get to work, this is the workforce issue as much as uh getting kids into a quality program, half of the kids going to Des Moines Public Schools don't get preschool or don't have preschool because the parents really probably can't get to work because they don't have a daycare after, so that's what this is about. It's a workforce issue and it's a benefit to the kids.
Yeah.
Um, the next category that we have here is educational support. Um, those are dollars that some of the things that we've got um discussed on that one would be the the DMAC and you and I um partnership that we had talked about, I think it was within the last month or so. Um, and then also maybe specific um training opportunities or educational opportunities for childcare or nursing or different things like that, were were kind of some of the ideas that we had heard um as well.
This, this one also has the uh scholarship, you said.
Yeah, for for the different.
Four, so we've got four entities that provide that. So there's a potential to put one million of this, one point five, towards scholarship to the four entities that provide uh post-aid, post-12 education in Des Moines. You and I will have a a presence at the DMAC campus and Grandview Great uh as well.
The, so this one i- is one that I've. I I've struggled with how the the particular purpose of this, but also some of the other things down on the list I would like to allocate more dollars towards. Um, it's a, I'm not gonna make a case to allocate more dollars without identifying places where I would maybe take dollars. Um, I think we need more allocated in our housing bucket. Um, and then a couple others, the the sidewalk gap and the the trees were a couple other places that that I'd been hoping to see a a larger allocation based on conversation. This is one of the areas where I would uh where I would maybe take a chunk from this area to and reallocate it to those other areas.
Uh, you know, Josh and I have recently talked a little bit, and I've talked to Carl and Linda, the trail portion, and I I've had a conversation with Ben. Uh, we've got a, we've got a trail system, the Gailey Wilson Trail on the east side that connects to nowhere. And it's, it's a very small portion that can connect the whole eastern side of our city to everything. And I just believe that some, this is a once-in-our-lifetime opportunity that we can get that done. And I I believe that now's the time to do it. And I'm I'm hoping to 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 have some support to do that. It's not that long of a stretch, and I don't want to wait until the the MLK is done. Uh, there's, there's a way to to do it differently. It's probably a lot better than having people drive, you know, riding down a a busy road. And um I I'd like to allocate probably more to the the trails and sidewalks, I would agree with Josh, for that particular instance. Now, I I don't know what bucket we're gonna take from, I don't know, I mean, two point five million dollars worth of trees? That seems like a lot of trees, I mean, I I don't know, I don't know. I know we lost a lot of trees during the Durate Show, and I'm happy that Trees Forever is putting more trees in. And I know that we're planting a lot in in my ward, and I sure appreciate it, but I mean, it just seems like two point five millions, a lot of trees, and to allocate more for that. Um, you know, I guess I just, you know, a lot of this, and it, this, these dollars, and I've mentioned this to Scott, needs to be spread out through our entire city. And I want to make sure if it's broken down by ward of how we're going to allocate some of this, you know, you know, Ward One automatically is getting twelve million dollars, fine, that's great, they need a new community center. And I'm fine with that, and I'm happy to be supportive of that. But, you know, I'm also represent the people in Ward Four, and I want to make sure that we're gonna get our fair share of of ARPA dollars, because this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And I, and I just want to make that clear, that it would be nice to see how how this is impacting each ward and where these dollars are allocated in each ward. Now, you're not gonna be able to do that for the housing, because I know that we don't have all the specific projects. But, you know, I I'll say it, and and I've said it publicly, and I've said it on uh in in my, in my ward at the neighborhood meetings, we have our share of affordable housing on the south. We have our share of affordable housing on the south side, on the southeast side. We have all of our share there. And I and I'm telling you and I've and I've said it to my colleagues, I'm not in favor of putting more affordable or low-income housing on the south side. I'm 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 not going to be, you know, I that we have our share. And I'm not going to have to say it again and this is not a knock on anything. We we just, it it's it's not, it's not fair. It's not fair to the to the folks we're putting there and it's not fair to the folks that living there to segregate everybody into one area of town. And so I just, I I want to make that clear that, you know, I have the most green space in our city. And, you know, to use that undeveloped area and to and if we're going to think that we're going to use this do- these dollars to go put that type of housing in the southeast quarter quadrant where we can have a potential of some really great housing, then I'm going to have a problem using these dollars to do that. Okay, now if we want to do rehab to some of the facilities that we've got, you know, our 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 homes in the area that I represent are affordable housing, but they need help putting money back into those homes and rehabbing them. I'm fine with that. You know, I struggle with building sixty-one homes on the southwest side for Habitat Humanity where we can we're going to put streets in, we're going to put infrastructure in and we're going to allow them to go do that, but we've got all kinds of homes that we can be rehabbing particularly in Ward Four and really making a difference and they are affordable. So, I mean, I I've said it many times, I'm, you know, I get criticized from the people that don't live on the southeast side because everybody that does live on the southeast side, I am speaking for them and they do agree with me. And so I just, I want to make that very clear that if we're looking at this and we're looking at the green space that we have available in our city and that's what we plan on doing with some of this money, I I'm I'm a no vote.
So let me.
Well, I I mean, I think we should have a broader housing conversation, but I I I do want to talk about housing because we need more housing, period. We need more housing at all levels. We need more workforce housing.
Yep.
Um, you know, I know one.
And I have more more of my share of workforce housing, not on corridors, in neighborhoods than any other person sitting at this table.
I, that that's fine. Our city needs more of it, period. And uh and we.
Better find some space in Ward Three because you've got some green space over there.
Uh, well, and there are places we can, we can go vertical. We've got a project that, you know, at at our last council meeting, we had, I think, fifteen workforce housing tax credit projects. Uh, I'm not sure if all of those will get built, but I think we ought to work to try and make sure that they do get built. A lot of those were were in the third ward. Uh, there there's a project that was going to go in on on Ingersoll and if we can buy down affordability uh so that there is more affordability or if we can hit try and get to that thirty percent AMI, thirty, forty percent AMI on the on the Ingersoll corridor, I'm willing to do that.
And on grand too, right?
And on grand too.
Perfect.
Uh.
I'm all for that. We'll give lots of dollars for that.
And and I think.
So it spreads it out.
I think we need, I think we need places downtown too where we build multifamily and we can buy down affordability so that multifamily projects that we are building have a range of options within them. It goes to what you were saying, we that we're not segregating affordable, we're incorporating that into into projects. And I think we can use these dollars to accomplish that and we should. Uh, I think we should also look at other other options as well, other things that we can do and if that means how we rehab affordable homes, we should do that, but I think I think the the housing dollars are in in my mind, I think we we should be trying to do more there. You know, I think the county is looking, the county allocated at around fifteen million.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think we should be trying to get, I don't know if we can get to to that level, but I would support more dollars there.
I'm fine with supporting more dollars. I just made a clear statement and I want everyone to know how I feel up here and if you're in agreement with that, okay. I'm fine with putting more affordable housing in Ward Three. I'm fine with putting more affordable housing downtown. I am not fine with putting more affordable housing on the southeast in Ward Four and on the east side. Not okay with it and I'm not, I'm I'm not going to be okay with it.
Right.
And because and it's not just me, it's every neighborhood association that I bring it to.
And and we're going to have to, I mean, we allocate this bucket, there will be multiple opportunities in in multiple additional votes for each project. I I'm assuming, at least based on what I heard, that any more specific allocation, we're going to have to have a specific vote on it.
Yeah, no, that's true.
That's exactly.
You will have every opportunity to to have your say, but the big piece is to make sure that we get dollars in there and we work to address what is a major long-term need in our community. Right? And one that we see in other places if they don't get their, if we don't, if we are not proactive about trying to provide more housing solutions, this problem is only going to get more challenging and more difficult to solve.
Mayor Procam, so it's six fifteen-ish and we were allocated for to six thirty and we're about halfway through these topics. What are we going to do? What's our plan here, just so everyone knows?
I I mean, folks have had questions. I think, I think it's important that we have this conversation and we continue going as long as folks have questions because I think we need to have this discussion and we need to have it in the public and we need to provide direction.
So so are we going through line by line or 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 just jumping to questions?
No, we're gonna.
I can do it line by line faster.
We're we're gonna have to do line by line.
Real quick here.
Okay, let's go.
The the, but I want to answer this question too. There are several of these allocations that will come back to you with specific projects. Think about parks and trails. Uh, the trees, for instance, we've identified all the needs for new trees within the qualified census tracts and that's what that number represents is about two and a half million. So that's going to cover the whole city with the different qualified census tracts. But we can come back with the list of actual projects that that we would intend to use for the parks for that five and a half million to show what wards are being impacted so that you will get that detail.
That'd be helpful.
Uh.
And the sidewalks and the trails.
Sidewalks and trails. And so those are hopefully self-explanatory that four and a half million across the city for trails and sidewalks.
Probably not enough.
Probably not. Hey, that could be said about just about every one of these categories, true.
But this is a, this is an opportunity that we can change that. I mean, we have ninety-four million dollars that have been dropped in our lap.
Yes.
That we've never had before.
Right, but it has to come out of something on this list.
Well, that not, no, you you created this list. Uh, we didn't, I mean, I I didn't have a whole lot of input into this list.
So.
You created this list. I didn't create this list.
But.
From the input I was getting from people, so if I didn't get enough input from you, that's what I'm asking for now, is that you if you want more here, then then I've got to find someplace to take it out of, I guess. Um, let's go through these others. The solar panels, did I miss one? Basically, yes, I did, a couple. Uh, food insecurity. There are three entities that have specifically asked for funds. Um, we have Meals on Wheels, uh, D-Mark and the Silt Program, which may need some more information to share with you. Silt is a a nonprofit that helps put uh uh available land with potential uh urban farming uh groups. So think about some of the issues we've had before with uh needing an acre here, maybe two or three acres close to the urban area that can be for edibles only. We're not talking about marketing outside of the Des Moines. We're talking about vegetables and 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 fruits and things of that nature that can be farmed locally.
Food bank's not included in this?
Well, the D-Mark food, but not the state food.
Not the food bank.
Right.
I I and I I think that'll be an interesting discussion. I I'm a strong supporter of Meals on Wheels. I think I know, I know that we don't want any children to go hungry, but we also have adults out there that are completely isolated, have no way to get meals and Meals on Wheels really does offer a great service to many, many of our elderly residents. So I, you know, I don't know how that's going to break down, but they do, they do provide a really good service and.
Yeah, I don't think you have to convince anybody up here.
Okay.
But I thought the project was going forward regardless though.
Which project was that?
The Meals on Wheels project.
The construction.
Right, they're building a new facility in in my ward, by the way.
Right.
But I thought that was going forward regardless, so.
Oh, they're asking for money for the project?
It, so so why why would we, why would we give for something that was going to happen already? Like, I, we should be using these dollars to to go farther. But Meals on Wheels is a great program.
If it can provide more meals to to our elderly.
If it can provide more meals, it's fine, but if it's only going to provide like a gap of some construction, I mean, that's that really isn't what we should be using these dollars for.
Well, that's what we just need to hear.
Yeah, that that's, and then when you talk about, when we talk about trails, Scott, i- is this is this four point five million additional revenue on top of what we've already in sidewalks, on top of, or is just replacing the GO bonds? So it really isn't any truly a new stuff? Is that, is that what we're is that what we're doing here? Or are we actually going to put four point five additional money for on top of what we've already have allocated to do other stuff?
That is a choice that that we need to get input back from because this could be a extra capacity.
Well, what do you have it in there as? Do you have not have it in there as extra capacity or you have it in there as taking place of GO bonds? Because at that point, I mean, we're really not, we're not adding anything.
My my impression, i- if this isn't additional above and beyond, I mean, because that was the promise, because we didn't even hit the funding level during.
On the sidewalks.
On the sidewalks. We didn't hit the funding level on the sidewalks, the priority one sidewalk gaps that that I I was hoping that we were going to hit during our our last budget. I mean, we're actually I thought a cut from the commitment that we had made. I mean, we weren't even hitting three million a year. Uh, and so this was designed to go a little farther and we've got I mean, we're still we're still not even on pace to finish this in the next twenty years, even adding another four and a half million. This might buy off or buy down a year, right?
If it was all on sidewalks.
It's not going to be all on sidewalks. I mean, I I'm, I'm asking for a trail connection to connect the east side of Des Moines to the rest of our city that they've, I mean.
I'm okay putting more dollars in this, but I I want to make sure we, the priority one sidewalk gaps, I mean, that serves people who don't have.
I, you don't have to convince me of that. I mean, I've been talking about sidewalks for eight years that I've sat down.
Yeah, and a lot of that'll go to your ward too.
Right.
There are a lot of gaps in.
There's all kinds of gaps.
But I want to see that that priority one because, you know, we had a child that was killed over on East University and three of us walked that trail and we're sending kids home from school that have to walk through grass and there's no sidewalks and I looked and they're not even on the priority. How is that possible?
Well, we.
How is that possible?
There was sidewalks. They just probably need to be redone, part of the sidewalks that me and you walk.
You did, but you go the other way, there's no sidewalk along.
No, I I walked with you and Carl down that, down that neighborhood area.
But if we would have walked the other trail, the other group went down the other way, there's no sidewalk.
Well, they walked down the DOT way.
Yeah, and there's no sidewalk.
On University?
Yes.
For part of that, it's a dirt path.
I can show you the pictures.
Okay, well. We're, Scott, Scott has a fix to that. We're going to fix.
Yeah, we're going to fix that.
We have that, that's not part of this conversation. We do have a fix for that.
But when we talk about priority one, I have to wonder.
Well, we said, I mean, there is a book that shows the priority one.
I know and it's not on there.
Yeah, well, that's then then it was missed and it needs to be fixed and part of the reconstruction of university, the overlayment, we're going to put a sidewalk in there for sure. They won't be a dirt path, I can guarantee you that. For sure.
All right, so I promise I go quick, but.
Okay, but 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 the four point five is additional to what you already have in the budget.
That's the preference.
Yes.
So, yes.
Well, yeah, I mean.
That's my preference.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I I didn't, I just wanted to clarify, in in the five point five is addition to what we already have budgeted for parks and park projects.
That one is not.
Hmm.
That one is to allow for the the discussion earlier about uh needing capacity on the debt side to issue ten million for the airport authority. And so I've asked Ben to provide a list of parks projects that has a mix of some new capacity, but most of it is identified in the CIP over the next three years.
Identified but not paid for.
Not paid for yet, but would have, would take future debt.
Right.
That we can.
They're new projects, but they're not, they're not, I mean, they're projects that were identified.
In the CIP.
But we're already, we're not bonding for the north side community, so that's never were though. We were going to use sales tax dollars.
Correct.
So we can use the sales tax dollars of that ten million to to use for the parks, so that would free up the the projects that he already has. If you you, I mean, that would pay for the projects that he has already.
Uh, yeah, I believe, I think Birdland Marina was was one of those additions to local option that we moved this uh nine point five out of ARPA so that that freed up some, I think it was three, it was three different allocations of two million each to.
We committed five million over five years to Birdland, I thought, wasn't it? Is that what we did?
Uh, well, the original allocation was the twelve million from local option. It was over the course of um, three, uh, two, four years, it was, it was three million a year. Um, and so when we actually went to doing this as at the nine point five, it freed up uh dollars to go towards um Birdland instead of um having the local option go to North Side Community Center, it was then freed up to go towards that project on the local option side.
Short answer is that switch has already been.
Contemplated and.
Moved over to Birdland Marina.
Okay, good.
To accommodate that issue.
Because, you know, we have a fifty-four million dollar plan that we've brought out and told everybody.
Yeah, but 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 Center Street isn't going to get done. So, I mean, we're going to spend money up at Birdland Marina and spend fifty million and that dam and Center Street might not get done for ten more years if ever. And so the attraction isn't, it's not going to go that way. It's going to go down the raccoon now. So you just got to keep that in mind a- as we talk about water trails where it was Prospect and Birdland and then the Center Street and people were going to come down through downtown. That's not going to happen.
But this didn't have anything to do with the water trails. Our fifty-four million dollar Birdland Marina
Right.
was, is a revenue generating
It's a need.
business and it's a need and that was completely separate from water trails. It doesn't have anything to do with the water trails.
Well, it it would have been a better revenue generator if it if it had a.
Yeah, but.
If it if it had the the Center Street dam out and that was used as like it was going to be used. I mean, a marina is fine. Is the marina going to cost fifty-four million and then some of the updates there?
No, the building was a big piece of that and there were a couple other elements that may not be necessary.
That's fifty-four million dollars over thirty-five years. I mean, it was a long-range plan.
Okay.
No, were you going to do it faster?
I was expecting the pressure to be faster than that.
Okay, then you've got pressure.
How much is the, how much is the marina? Because I think that would be the number one thing that we need to get.
Let me, let me.
That is, then come on, let's do it.
Interest of time, I I anticipated we would need another discussion just about the housing. How about we bring back the list of the parks as well?
Yeah.
That next discussion, so we can focus on those two discussions. How would we further allocate the parks funds and the uh the housing and we can address the rest of these in the next five or ten minutes, maybe? Is that all right?
Let's try, let's keep going.
Okay, the next one is kind of challenging because I got to go back up to uh basic income because I understand that some of you have had conversations with the nonprofit Mid Iowa Health Foundation. They have put together a group of uh local governments with the county and I believe even maybe another suburb that was interested and several other nonprofits to put together uh some uh a stimulus program that would be studied by professional academia that have done this in other places across the country. And what it essentially amounts to is a four, five hundred dollar monthly payment to low-income families to give them the stability uh to pay their bills and then track that for up to a two-year period is what they preferred. bills, and then track that for up to a two-year period, is what they preferred, um, to show all the benefits of having, uh, a, a amount of income that's guaranteed, and that is making sure that they can get.
Scott, I can't find employees. We're gonna pay people to stay home more now? And it's, it's not. You see all the help wanted signs out there?
I, I'm, yeah, I, I, this is the first I've heard of that, I.
I mean, I, I'm just telling you. We cannot pay for people to stay home anymore. I, I'm fine with food insecurity, I'm fine with helping folks with childcare so they can work, I am not okay with paying people to stay home anymore. That, that, that has to end, because right now, the job market is, is wide open. You can go get a job making 20, 25, 30 dollars an hour, it's not, it's not a minimum wage job, that market's not out there anymore, and to pay people to stay home, absolutely not.
And that's not the intent here.
This is not a.
Where did that come from? This is the first I've heard of.
I apologize, I thought that there had been communications.
No, I haven't heard anything about this.
I don't know about it, never heard of it.
So that's third on my list, to make sure that conversation, cause I'm not the one leaving.
So, so say that for me again, what, what, what?
It's a universal basic income pilot program, so.
I know where it came from now.
I'm not gonna be able to explain it in five or 10 minutes, I thought it already had been, so let me get those appointments set up with you, cause I'm not gonna be a good person to, to be able to have all the details on how that gets.
We got a lot of needs in this community not to pay somebody.
We're gonna give people income to not work?
It's not to not work, it's, because we're talking $400 a month, that's not gonna give somebody enough money to just not work. This is, this is the, gonna hit people that are already working in most cases, that, and I think maybe.
But we're gonna save money on childcare, the folks that need it, right? We've got childcare in here.
Won't necessarily be the same people, though, that's benefit from that.
None of, none of the things that we are doing, there's a greater need in every single area. The idea behind a study is to look at the impact of a policy and a method of delivering, delivering benefit, and what that does from an impact. The number of people that would get to participate in this is relatively small.
110.
Uh, and I believe that, that the count.
Did you say 110 people?
Over two years.
And that's 1.5 million dollars?
No.
No, but that, that allows for half the money to go to this program I just mentioned.
So is that paying for their staff to implement this program?
It would assist.
Yeah, we, we've got more of those than what we need.
Yeah, I don't need to talk to anybody, I'm not in favor of that, we're not doing, I'm not doing that, you guys can do whatever you want.
Got it, got it, sorry.
That's not, I'm not gonna pay for.
Conversation had already happened.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Well, hey, we found, we found 1.5 million to go into trails and, and parks and sidewalks?
I don't think so, cause I think there's probably a split on that particular item, but we'll have to have further discussion.
Right, so that's not the only opportunity for the, this line item, uh, impact is looking at, uh, a program that assists the families that are coming in for like lihe and rental assistance, and what they're finding is, there is still a very large need for other items to be paid for, and he's looking into a program that would be available to those same families.
That's why you see a sign every single place you go that says help wanted, cause we keep providing assistance so people don't have to work.
But Joe, you're seeing.
I'm telling you, but that, there's a reason why people aren't applying for jobs in, in, in our city and in this country, is because we keep shelling it out to them so they don't have to work. That is not okay. I'm sorry.
But there, I just want you to understand this, there is a segment of our residents that are working full-time, and let's say they're making 13, 14 bucks an hour, that could use some assistance, and that's what part of this is trying to address. Does that make sense?
I don't, I don't, I don't know if anybody's paying anybody 13, 14 bucks an hour these days, Scott, I'm sorry. We better get our goggles off, figure out what's going on in our community.
All right. Youth, youth programming, Connie, did you wanna chime in with what the request was there?
I just want, uh, the deal is, too, yes, there's a lot of people that are working, that are working for, and they still can't make ends meet, and this is a trial project that's from one understanding, to say, how can we better serve people? Uh, so it's not for people to stay home, it's really for, you know, people, a lot of people are working, they just don't have enough for food, and they don't have enough to cover the rent. So I think that it's, uh, on this case, it's a pilot project, I'm having trouble hearing some of you guys, so, um, cause I think it's not geared for people to stay home, it's geared to be that bridge that aren't making it day to day.
Yeah. All right, so the last item on here is youth programming, this is one where Boys and Girls Club have indicated a willingness to help, uh, with youth summer cleanup or other jobs that can get them active, and Connie, did, did you have conversations?
Yeah, this is kind of, uh, what I, after we had the incident with the schools, it was a way where we realized that young people that are 14 and 15 have very limited opportunities to work, and Boys and Girls Club, they're in like at least three middle schools or four, um, Oak Ridge has middle school programs, um, and also, um, Urban Dreams, and basically it's cleanup crew, giving kids something to do this summer, like up to 20 hours a week, and have teams go out and clean up the city, uh, working with Public Works, provide the bags, the vests, uh, so as a way to get some money into young people's hands and show them, and then also have similar to what that Forever Trees, hopefully good lessons on how to save money, how to realize money, and, uh, just be an opportunity for kids to earn some, uh, money to get the things that they need.
And that program probably needs to be expanded, 800,000 isn't probably enough that we need to be giving this dollars for youth. The, the, we're, we're losing our youth in, in, in our, in our community, in our, in our country, and if we don't get a hold of them and, and show them right, wrong, how to work, how to do things, we got big problems. And so I, I have no problem with youth programming, and as long as it's used correctly, and it's used through the right programs, and, and they're directed in the right way, yeah, I, I would think that that would be a really good program. But when you look at basic income, let's, let's look at McDonald's. McDonald's is paying people 15 bucks an hour, $15 an hour to start, and you guys want to talk about 12 or 13 dollars? There's nobody paying anybody 12 or 13 dollars an hour in this city anymore, so I don't know.
We are.
Well.
We are.
We're paying people 15 dollars an hour, I believe.
Uh, no, I mean, we are in our parks and rec.
Well, that, that, then you know what? We shouldn't be.
We, we.
That's why, that's why our pools are, are, are struggling to stay open. Nobody's gonna work for 12 or 13 dollars an hour.
I agree that we should, at, at a minimum.
But these are 16-year-old, and it's 16 to 18-year-old kids, Josh, that we're employing also. These aren't adults that are looking for basic income, full-time employees, okay? I mean, McDonald's has full-time employees that they're starting off at 15 dollars an hour. That's the gold standard, I mean, that's McDonald's. So, I mean, I, everybody got, needs to get their goggles off, the 7.25 dollars an hour is unheard of.
But, but I agree, everyone needs to get their goggles off.
Right.
Because.
I live in this world, and I, and I deal with it every single day, I don't go home.
But let, wait, give, give me a second.
Absolutely.
Let's get our goggles off.
Right.
Someone who's making 20 dollars an hour.
Yeah.
And what that means in this community, because we have housing costs that people can't afford at 20 dollars an hour. You add one or two kids, let alone someone who has three or four kids?
Right, by their choice.
Oh, I, I understand.
Hey, Josh, me and my wife work two jobs our entire, our, our, our entire, my wife, when she decided to have another child, that's, that's the last time, and she still works two jobs. Lot of people have to work two jobs or survive, okay? That's part of life, and that's the problem with this society right now, and we could sit here and have this discussion out in front of everyone, but that's where fundamentally me and you are going to always disagree, cause I don't have a trust fund, and I, and I don't live that way, and everything I've gotten, I've had to work for, okay? And everybody needs to get the goggles off, I do not have a steady income that I haven't had to work for, okay?
There are lots of folks who work hard and.
I, I understand that.
Can't make it in this community, because we are not building housing where we need to build housing, we're not, there's a whole host of things that we don't do.
That we don't do, or the entire region doesn't do, where the, where the, where the low-income job centers are, that, that are, that our regional partners won't build affordable housing in their community.
Everyone has a responsibility.
Right.
Everyone has a responsibility.
They're not using their ARPA, ARPA dollars for that.
Uh, Mayor Pro Cam, how about if we wrap up this meeting?
That's fine, I, at the next meeting.
I think we can have.
Yeah.
I think we should continue this meeting. It, it, well, let's get through the items, let's get additional feedback.
And, well, let's get, get our, get our staff the feedback that they need, because
clearly folks did not have.
Clearly, we don't have half the information for this meeting. We, I mean, there's, there's things on here that half of us haven't even heard of.
Basic income was not on anything I've ever seen.
I mean, let's allocate more time then.
That's been registered as more information is needed.
All right.
And, and we'll bring that.
Can I, can I just say, I think a lot of different groups have been sending things into individual councils, and I think that the manager has got individuals, and I think there's some additional information that we need, now that we know, like, is it additional money that's going into, like, the sidewalks or trails? And what are the specifications of some of these groups asking for money, what is it really going for that we might need more detail on? So I'm just throwing that out, but I think overall, these are some of the areas we're going at, and then what is the more finite information that we need? Uh, I'll just throw that out, because, again, um, I think there, you know, I didn't even know what tilt was, so it's like some of these explanations would be helpful, um, and I'm sure there's more detail on some of these expenditures. I understand the buckets, but it's what is the, how does it break down in more detail?
Okay.
Yeah, I can understand it.
Connie said it would be helpful, I'll, I'll try and summarize, it would be helpful to have more information on some of the detail in these items, she understands the buckets, but additional detail on, on some of the specific, particularly where there were individual projects that folks maybe have not, have not heard about, if they, uh, because a lot of this, I think, came directly to the, to the manager, um, because folks did not present to us.
So.
Well, not on the whole list.
We had to seek stuff out in a number of these cases.
Mayor Pro Cam, if I can just say, so Monday, these five buckets are on our council agenda, so if we were to vote on these five buckets, we're not necessarily committed to any.
Individual items.
Individual items. If we just said, we're gonna put this much money into economic development, then we could then dice it up and come to consensus of how we wanted to spend.
But you can't take money out of the economic development bucket and put it into social and environmental.
No.
Without having another council action.
To change, to change the policy.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not doing anything.
But if it's just in the bucket.
Honestly, why wouldn't we figure out how to allocate all the buckets before we vote on anything?
Well, some, some better ideas might come along that we're, we're not aware of, Joe. I, I mean, that could happen.
I mean, and if we decided, hey, we need to put more money here, then we could go back to council action and say, we're gonna take some money out of the violence, now that, because we've already committed that, pick an item, we're gonna take some money out of that and now put it down into a different bucket. We can do that, correct?
I mean, all of these things, we can act on with additional council.
It doesn't really matter what we vote, I mean, if you just vote for the bucket.
Well, it, it matters because we're providing guidance to staff.
Yeah.
To have more conversation.
So that they pursue things within those buckets, and we need to provide some level of guidance, and we need to figure out a process to move this forward.
So let's, let's, can we talk about economic development then?
Yeah.
Can we move on and, and, and try to figure out if 18 million's enough for that, or if it's too much, and we can put it in a different bucket? Can we?
Sure.
Okay, let's do that.
So former Dico site, we're all familiar with the situation there, but there, there is still additional work that needs to be done, whether that's to assist with the potential of the stadium, or even if not. And so this is an opportunity to use some of these funds to finish off the, what's needed there, or at least.
What's our contribution to the stadium?
The contribution to the stadium at the moment is, uh, TIF funds, and, um, so that's only when it's, they generate the private taxable properties, and what this will help do is, uh, additional environmental for the, for the public space, because part of the design of that is to have a, a plaza area to have public events on, so this, these funds can go to assist that. In addition to the TIF.
And I do really like that, I think a global stage is exactly what this city needs. We need, I mean, we have such a diverse population, and we have a lot of population groups in our community that rally around soccer, I think a global stage is a good thing.
Okay. Um, the Blitz on Blight is continued efforts in, uh, removal of blight, but to move into the commercial properties, which is incredibly expensive for removal.
So this is an additional 5 million on top of what we do with local option sales tax?
Yes, so think of things like the Franklin site that, that needs to be taken down and others.
That, that's addressed through NDC right now, right?
Yes, but that's, I'm just saying, as an example, along corridors and on our nodes, I think you can all think of five or 10 properties within your own wards pretty easily, uh, could utilize these funds.
You can drive up and down Southeast 14th and start eliminating big box stores that have no use whatsoever.
I'd hate to think that that isn't $300,000 contracts each to, so you can spend 5 million pretty quickly with that kind of.
Well, right.
All right.
It, which. It, I mean, I think part of our long-term vision needs to be, how do we figure out, how do we get folks back in, in, investing in the corridors? And I don't think sprinkling a small amount of money on tearing down buildings and corridors adds anything or meets, meets a need. I think we should be more proactive with those dollars, so I, I would support investing more of those dollars in things that meet immediate needs, um.
So you're saying a project that's ready to go?
Well.
Well, we wouldn't just go start tearing down buildings unless there was a project.
I.
Well, there, actually, there is opportunity to do that, so that the, the redevelopment of that, now what you do is you put a lien on that property, so when they redevelop, it's part of the incentive that you could waive part.
Well, if you, I mean, if we have a urban, a TIF area through a corridor, and someone has a project, but they don't have the money to take down whatever's there.
Which happens a lot.
Yes, then this money could be used for that, so then they can put their, they can put their project in, and then it would generate taxable dollars instead of a vacant building.
Right.
But with that, though, with the TIF has to, the increment has to be generated before that, that flow of funds would come in.
Well.
Yeah, they'd have to build the building.
If, if, if they were doing TIF, but, I mean, the type of thing that I would support, i- if this was used to tear down projects, to facilitate a new project, I, I would be more comfortable with this. If this is just used to tear down an existing building, because it's underutilized, but there's nothing that comes after, I don't think that's a good use of dollars.
No, I don't think that's a good use of dollars either.
To have, to take a building down and just have a blank, an empty lot for who knows how long, but if it's facilitating a new project, I would support, support something like that, otherwise I think we should be looking, looking at more proactivity.
I think there's, you know, we've talked about our vacant building ordinance, and I agree with what you're saying, Josh, we took down Wallace School, it cost us lots and lots of money to take down, and that land is still there, vacant, and it's still owned by somebody out on the east coast, and there's not a darn thing we can do with it.
Right.
And, and that's too bad, but we've got other buildings, like the building that, And, and that's too bad, but we've got other buildings, like the building that, you know, came before council a few months ago that was full of graffiti, and it's falling down. That's a situation where we probably need to do something for the health of our neighborhoods. What I'm concerned about is, is that we're putting money to make our neighborhoods better. We do that with trails, with sidewalks, with having good properties.
How about the Village Inn that sits on the corner of Euclid and Southeast 14?
It's privately owned.
And, you know, if somebody wanted to build something there, but they said, I don't, I, I can't, I can't tear some, I, I can't afford to tear it down.
Then let's help them with that. That's, that's, I'm, I'm fine with that.
That's what we should be using it for. That's a corridor, that's what we should, that's what these dollars were meant to do.
And that will make our neighborhoods look better.
To strengthen our community.
Right.
I want what makes our neighborhoods look better.
With an imminent project.
With an imminent project, because just tearing stuff down, like, it's not gonna get us that far, and we could just end up...
You're gonna have a big vacant lot that people are gonna call about the weeds.
Wallace School is a perfect example of that.
Which could still be better than what might be there today.
It depends on what it is. I mean, there's, I mean, there's a couple properties I can think of that probably just be tore down, and it's in the middle of the neighborhood, that's never, is never going to probably be a commercial property
Yeah.
that probably should go, and should have gone a long time ago. But, yeah, I mean, I can, I can see some of those that are in my ward that...
Okay, so that's good guidance for us. The next one is a combination of NFC and NDC payment. It's also combining what's, what's been committed annually already, and adding to that for additional capacity.
That's the 10.5.
Yeah, so let's break that down.
So, so from that, it's the, we were trying to do, uh, the initial thought of that would have been that, that about 6 million on the existing contributions, given the timeframe of ARPA, and then having the additional 4.5 being, uh, additional projects with NDC, NFC beyond, um, what our normal annual contribution is.
And that's fine, but I've had conversations with Scott, these, they can't use federal funds, so we have to do some swapping there. And the NFC cannot take, their 28E agreement specifically says it's not coming from federal funds. And they can't use federal funds, no.
I did not realize that.
I, I sent you an email. We've had this discussion.
But so, Cedar Rapids, and this is a program I'd like to see us replicate, Cedar Rapids, I thought, has allocated some of their ARPA dollars to NFC and Cedar Rapids to do efficiency retrofits. That's good, that's from federal funds, is my understanding.
Uh, I just had, I just was in a conversation with, with NFC, I just came from there, and, and they're still waiting for their 28E agreement that is due by the end of June. And we're just, I think legal has it now, and they're gonna extend it, but these, these, some of these people cannot use federal funds. The NFC dollars...
Your example was pretty narrow, wasn't it? Energy?
Right, the, the, the efficiency retrofit exam, I...
That, that's a program that you, you sent me an email about, that we haven't got a chance to talk about it, but that...
That, that may be different, I...
And I assume Stephanie's talked about that at board meetings, that, that had come up when I was still serving on NFC, and, and my understanding is that subsequent to, to the transition, that, that that program is...
Well, okay, we need some clarification there then.
Yeah, I thought we'd had a discussion with the, with Scott that
No.
for this money that comes from NFC, that we could use some lost funds instead of the federal dollars and switch it around.
Can NDC use, uh, federal dollars?
Then they have to go by federal guidelines. I don't, I don't know.
No, that did not, those do not require vacant, they, they, they can, no, we confirm that.
No, I think that David, the, there is reference in the Davis Bacon for projects over 10 million.
That's why, that was one of the additional...
Additional requirements.
You can visit with NFC, she said that she had sent you an, an email, or that she had talked to you?
No, so I'll, but I will get there.
Reach out to her, because I just left there.
Okay.
Yeah, well, in, in some of this, and I just got a reminder from someone, some of these things might be sitting in our email inboxes. It, just a reminder, it, Scott, I think...
Yeah, I've been gone for two minutes.
Well, well, no, but even before, I think, for example, the universal basic income program, uh, you sent all of us an email on May 13th about that.
I, I thought it was...
So, so you, you were correct that it was sent to us, it, it might not have registered, it might not have registered to folks what it was, um, but, but it was...
Did you, did you put in the email that we were giving 1.5 million dollars to it, at our funds?
Well, again, that one's on the third quarter.
Did you just send us the information, and just told us to look at it?
There, there was a broader letter and an offer to, I mean, I think I met with the person afterward.
Okay.
So...
Alright.
Can I just, Chris Johansson, are you, are you in agreement with what Stephanie said? That it can't be federal funds? Because Chris was in the same meeting. I just wanna make sure I'm saying it correctly.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem, Chris Johansson, Neighborhood Service Director. The existing 2080 agreement is for non-federal funds.
Right.
So if they wanted anything additional outside of that, we'd have to discuss with them what the requirements would be.
Right.
Federal requirements that they're usually used to have income restrictions, other, other barriers, that's gonna hurt their program. So, I think it matters what they'd wanna use the, the funds for.
That's why the efficiency's okay.
So, for example, if we targeted efficiency retrofits to qualified census tract, or, or qualified individuals, you would be able to do that with the dollars?
Yeah, you'd have to talk to NFC.
Yeah, I...
NFC would be the one you need to, that needs to answer the question.
And these are not typical federal funds, that's the other key.
Yeah.
They have purposely stripped away a lot of those...
People are just interested in getting into homes, so whatever we need to do, you know, when you're a home buyer and you're, you're looking at NFC, and you can't really buy anything that's not energy efficiency these days. So, let's, let's have that conversation. Thanks, Chris, I just wanted to make sure.
Uh, Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Program, that's a program that already exists, that this could be helpful to...
What do we, what do we put in there now?
The first phase of it was, I think, 340,000.
Well, annually, what do we, what, what gets you annually out of this fund?
Uh, they use it all.
We've kind of tailored it different, no, uh, it was one where I, I think we allocated some of the CDBG funds to it, and so it was very restrictive in nature. Uh, we did free up, um, more unrestricted-type funds in the first phase of, of 340. Um, so this would just be a phase two, so it's not in, in annual allocation at this time.
So you're not paying Davis Bacon wages when you hire somebody?
For the, for the, uh, we got away from the requirements under the CDBG, um, whether, um...
I don't know if that's good or bad, I mean, still...
Well, I, I think it was being underutilized when it was an annual allocation, and so, uh...
So you used the 340 annually for the last, what, year, two years?
Um, I can't remember, um, if it was an annual allocation, but I know phase one was the 340.
Can we, can we get a list of the projects over the last five years that utilized this program? Where we commit to doing, you know, maybe, maybe 500's not enough?
I'd have to work with, I'm sorry, what?
Well, when the, when you had the CDBG funds, nobody used the program.
Right.
We'll have to work with, um, Aaron Olson from Douglas for...
So, I don't know, now that you've changed it, maybe people are using it.
Yeah, the, the 340 was the first, uh, phase of, of this program without the...
So you only did it one year?
Uh, we won't, um, I don't know if they've...
With the restrictions.
Yeah, without the restrictions, I don't know exactly.
Is that for one project we gave somebody 340?
No, no, it was not.
No, okay. It'd be nice to get a list of those, please. Yeah, in, in how many years, in how many years the other funds are used over the last five years?
Yeah.
That should be pretty easy.
We've talked about affordable housing, the, uh, Homeward is on this as well, uh, discussions that we've had with, with Homeward.
What is that?
Coordinating entity? Angie, if you wanna maybe...
Is this, is this?
Uh, no, it's separate. Homeward, Homeward is, it's, it's the rebranded entity. So they staff the Homeless Coordinating Council, uh, and...
So is this, you're saying for staffing, or what is it?
Angie can come here, and if you want an explanation, and maybe we should have, this is maybe a separate thing, but maybe we should have Angie in for a longer, just up page, and...
I could do that.
And SIS, I would wanna hear from SIS, too.
Hi, my name's Angie Arthur, I'm Executive Director of Homeward. We are the regional planning organization for homelessness in Pope County. We help administer 4.5 million dollars in federal funds on an annual basis through the Continuum of Care Project, and in partnership with the City of Des Moines for Emergency Solutions Grants. We also help set community standards for the funding, so part of those dollars would be for that, as well as, um, supporting community caseworker roles that we are working in partnership with the county on as well.
So, are you part of Central Iowa Shelter, or have nothing to do with it?
Different organization.
Completely different.
So, Central Iowa Shelter Services is our, our lead shelter in the community, but they're a service provider. We are the regional planning organization, so working with HUD, helping to apply for additional grants within the community when we applied for funding for the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Project, facilitating those funds, bringing in 1.65 million dollars into the community, as well as working with local funding organizations and foundations as well to bring additional dollars in the community to focus on, um, as, um...
So do you, do you work together with, with our shelter, or does, or how, how does that...
With all the partners within the community, so, but with SIS specifically, I'm asking. Sure, yes. Their, Central Iowa Shelter Services is part of that. We work with all the service providers within the community. Primary Health Care with centralized intake, Anowam Housing with permanent supportive housing, Iowa Homeless Youth Center with youth programs specific to that, uh, Children and Families of Iowa for Domestic Violence Shelters, as well as other community partners that participate. Um, Home, Inc. and worked with us in our homeless prevention programs. Um, we also did other partnerships with other community members, um, within that, to work with eviction prevention through the past few years, partnered with different organizations along that line.
No faith bait, no Hope Ministry, door fate, none of, you don't, you don't work with any of them, do you?
They still participate in our conversations, we do not have any funding that goes to those organizations. But as they are service providers within our community, we still invite them to participate in our, in our meetings that we have. We have monthly meetings with different communities, Performance Measures Community with Coordinated Services, with, um, a variety of other services communities, in partnership with, uh, the service providers, where we talk about veterans homelessness, youth homelessness, chronic homelessness, as well as family meetings. So all those type of things are facilitated through our organization.
And they also are the lead staff and facilitator of the Homeless Coordinating Council, and, uh, and the Extreme Weather Working Group that council created at the beginning of this year.
Right.
So we've given financial support to the entity for years, but oftentimes, similarly, it was CDBG funds that had too many restrictions to them, that Homeward COC was not able to utilize. So this is an opportunity to avoid a general fund ask, but, and this is a three-year ask, by the way, so you divide that number by three annually.
Okay.
Yeah, what's that?
What, it's a three-year, uh, assistance, and, and so it's 150,000 years, three years, what intent?
And what do, what do we typically give them per year out of the CB?
We had gone, was it as high as 80,000, 75, 80, 75,000?
We're, we're doubling it over, uh, three years?
It is correct.
And then what happens after the three years? Are we staying with 150,000 out of the general fund?
We'll come back and have another conversation.
It's not a commitment at this point.
And this is all just for, uh, staffing?
Part of it's for staffing, but also part of that is a commitment that's also being made in partnership with Pope County to create two community caseworker positions that will also help in, um, for a two-year pilot to focus on folks that are, um, are homeless, and helping get them connected to, uh, employment, as well as, um, housework, because lots of times, someone needs case management, you have to be enrolled within a specific program. So we have a lot of opportunities for people that need some supports, but don't have those available to them, because now they're not enrolled into a specific housing program.
And what, what's Pope County, uh, what's their contribution, uh, with, for this?
150,000 dollars. Both will be, that 150,000 dollars from both entities will allow us to run two staff members for the program for two years, and be able to have, um, computers to purchase for those, obviously, um, a little, that, and a little bit of support, maybe about 10 dollars of support to help things, to pay like, um, application fees and things along that line.
So they're given the same as what we're giving?
Yes.
But don't we already give them money?
This would replace that.
This isn't on top of, this is, this is not coming out of our general fund or CDBG funds.
Correct.
Or, yeah. Okay. We talked about this, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angie.
Scott, we had talked about some income for, for the mental health services over at the new, uh, Yes complex, but I don't see where that fits in here.
That's under the youth programming that I think we chatted about, right?
Yeah, that's sound right.
It is?
Is that the, um, Hesu Club Youth Center?
Boys and Girls Club?
Is that the IHYC?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's within the youth programming.
Okay.
Yeah, the 800, yep.
How much is it?
Uh... 250,000 on what Linda just asked.
250 for that?
250 just for the youth.
Over how many years? Is that, is that just one year, we're giving them 250, or?
Mm-hmm.
I think it is.
Yeah. And...
What, what happens to these programs after they're out of money?
Because somebody's fundraising, private fundraising, these are the, these are, that one needs to be considered a pilot, keep it up and running.
So...
I've heard lots of, lots of pilots today.
Well, it, it, this is another one, I think we got an email on May 11th from Toby O'Berry about this.
Yeah, I got the email from him.
Okay. That, that, that's what I think, I think that's what Linda was bringing up, and that's the specific.
Yeah, I know what it is.
So, so Scott or Nick, um, when you add up what's on the sheet, how close to 94.8 million?
Just under. This is just under.
So there's 1 million that...
There's 1 million left.
Okay, or for little projects or whatever.
A little less than 1 million.
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, too, if you go with what's in the expenditure policy, expenditure policy that, that, of the five different bucket, buckets that have the not to exceed, those technically, if you add those together, the not to exceeds is over the 94.8. It's just the, the four corners that were, will bring the specific items up later, under.
We don't have to be hung up on the not to exceed, if it's a, if it's a, uh, target, however you wanna think about it. It's, it's an understanding that this is what you want staff to pursue, is that amount.
What, what does it do to our, our, our debt levy? What, what's, what is using this money going to do? I mean, because I know we were right, still at that limit.
Yeah.
What is it gonna do in two years or three years to our, our, our tax levy?
So that's a question about how much of this funds is gonna be allowed to go to already identified projects in the CIP. So that's where the parks conversation is pretty heavy.
Not just parks, there's lots of things in here. I mean, we got, we got 94 million, and don't zero in on the 5.5 for just parks. So there's, there's lots of dollars in here, I'm, I'm, I'm asking, and I understand what you're saying about parks, but there's lots of dollars in here, so I'm asking you, what, what, once this is all allocated and this is gone, what is, what is our, our levy rate at that time look like? Because I know our debt is...
I would anticipate no change.
Um, it better look the same, because I'm not gonna vote for a tax increase.
I just, I, well...
We're modeling the, uh, what we had talked about, uh, that Councilman Voss brought up, is the airport is one thing that is not currently in, um, our debt planning. And so from that, if, um, if we avoid bond issuances to be able to incur that, um, we would still be in the same position that we are today. Um, and from that standpoint, we have to look at, and we do this through every budget process, um, and when, when we present that budget, we, we do go through and look at what we have for our, our debt limits, and, and determine how close we are to the council policy, which is 80% of our legal debt margin, and then also where we are sitting and where we anticipate our debt levy needing to be. And, um, one thing that has been able to keep that, that rate down has been the local option, of that 50% of it being the property tax relief, has been able to keep that very stable compared to where it would have to be with all the projects that we've done. Um, and from, from this standpoint, we've also, uh, a good example of what we, uh, what it was able to do in addition to just that, that piece of it, um, the, uh, I can't remember, it was, I think, April, uh, council approved the redemption of a bunch of 2014 bonds. I think, April, council approved the redemption of a bunch of 2014 bonds. In the past, we would normally refund those and pay them off with a refunding and then basically get a interest rate difference. We used existing cash on hand to be able to pay those off instead of refunding, given the interest climate that we are in today, but also so that if right there was able to save us on our debt service, because we had the ability on the short term to pay those off without having to basically refinance them.
So this is not doing any harm to the debt? There's an opportunity to assist and help. The six million for three-year payment to NFC and NDC, we get that cleaned up and figured out. I'm still hopeful that is available to us. That's six million of savings on the debt service over the next, and if we can find just a little bit of the parks or a little bit of the, I'm not sure what other category might fit, there might be a little bit of opportunity to benefit the debt service. I would not be thinking.
We're not, we're not doing the violence prevention out of there. That's almost a million.
But that's not debt service, that's general fund.
That's what?
That's.
That would not be debt. That would not be our capital project funds.
Is the trees?
That's all new.
But we still have budgeted money in there for trees.
We do, yes, we do.
True.
Which we cut this year compared to last.
So is this the only, the housing and homelessness, so we're only helping the?
Low income.
Homework? That's all? None of this goes to Central Iowa Shelter? None of it goes to Rebuilding Together? None of it goes to any of these other organizations that do any work in our city?
They will, or at least that's the next presentation that we come back to on just the housing and also the parks now. The housing, we'll get into further dividing this money up, and I have a hand out here somewhere, because we've got a work group with the city that's been working towards housing needs.
Okay.
And they've been able to identify that you have new construction needs, actually building and assisting. That's likely to only be available with these funds if the project's been contemplated, real estate's been established, because if they just start with a concept right now, it'd be a little hard to.
Timing. Shovel ready.
To get it all done. So yeah, shovel ready. But then there is a big piece of it that needs to be rehabbed, and that's where those nonprofit partners you just mentioned would be able to come in and talk through what, how would they use. And then there's also
So what have you allocated for that?
Haven't even put a number to it.
And that would be like rebuilding together.
Yes, but a lot. Yep. The last piece of that, though, is extending or retaining current affordable housing that may have no more restrictions to remain affordable. Think about it as they got tax credit 20 years ago and they've now, or about to expire.
How many projects is that?
There are hundreds of units. I don't know that we have a number. I think they were, that was the last assignment that was coming out of here. Let me see if it's on here. It is not. So they were going to go back and actually add those up. It's hundreds of units.
Will you let us know where they're at?
Yeah.
But those are all privately owned now. Those are privately.
They always have been privately owned.
Yes.
But there's an opportunity to go back to those same owners and say, we'd like you to continue that for another 20 years and give them some of this funding to make them update as well to their buildings to.
Well, if they don't update it, they're going to have to keep it that way. I mean, they're not going to make it market rate without doing the updating, if that's what you're thinking. I mean, I think, I think what you're thinking is that they're going to switch it to market rate and we're going to lose that affordability, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, well, I don't, yeah.
There's different amounts that would be necessary.
I doubt if we see that as much as you think for hundreds of years.
It's actually already occurring, so I'll give you those.
Okay.
Figures, and that's why we're aware that we don't, as we're trying to build more units and grow units, we've got to be cognizant of where we're losing.
I understand. That would be good to know. I'd like to know that and the addresses and what ward they're in.
So, so we're going to come back another time and talk about the housing part?
Yes.
And what about the shelter? What do we, what dollars, is there any dollars allocated for programming and for the shelter?
Assist shelter?
Yeah.
So we've assisted in other ways. We can talk, I don't know, we don't have a specific ask.
I didn't know.
There's just a lot of other projects.
You just said that affordable housing is part of that, part of the other partners that we have, and I would consider them a partner, and we built the place.
Right, and.
I just, is that not part of this?
It is.
Housing and homelessness.
Well.
I would hope then that they would ask for something because, I mean, they were proven, they do good work.
I just didn't, I just didn't know if that's, is that?
There's not a specific project identified.
All right. I mean, we're giving, we're giving money, though, for staffing, for homework, right? And for the program.
And we make annual payments.
I know that. But where's the annual payments come out of? General fund?
No, ESG mostly.
ESG is.
It's like CDVG, but it's a special category.
But it's a federal, I mean, they're federal dollars that we get, so it's not out of tax. I mean, it's not coming from taxpayers, is it?
Not from local tax.
Okay. So we don't give any, right, but we don't give them any taxpayer dollars on a regular basis?
Don't think so.
Other than when we built the facility? Did we build that on taxpayer dollars?
We gave a contribution. Was that a home or was that also EDC? That was home fund.
Okay, so no tax, no tax dollars?
No local.
Okay. All right.
And the last kind of category was the one-time luxury sports that we have. Obviously, parking fund was one that we've kind of already touched on. That's one where it is heavily affected with the revenue. We also have that kind of concept with the Botanical Center, Blank Park Zoo, and Bravo.
And is that how much revenue they lost during COVID? Is the 750?
Only a portion. That is not even the full amount. Not even close.
No, they lost more than that, is what I'm saying. Yes.
Yeah.
It's part because they were, I mean, they were closed.
Right.
So, actually, these funds are supposed to make whole what you, I mean, that's what those dollars are. That's why they gave us these dollars, but these entities aren't going to be made whole.
Correct.
Well, that's, that's an issue.
We may be the only ones that are contributing.
But some of them got PPP.
We own them.
Not Bravo.
They're not Bravo, but the two entities is what I'm talking about.
Bravo is, we don't own Bravo.
No, but we own the Botanical Center and the zoo.
That's why they're on there. That's the line that's been drawn as far as just nonprofits asking for funds that don't have a relationship with the city or meet one of these goals of housing or something of that nature.
But what I'm saying is the Botanical Center and the Blank Park Zoo have lost revenue from COVID, more than 750.
Correct.
These dollars that we're getting are supposed to make whole the city for what we've lost. That's what these are supposed to be used for. That's what the intention was.
That's what, well, that's what they can be used for. There's a lot of intentions, isn't there?
Well, it's.
500 paid.
That's the not, that's the non-restricted. I mean, we could give them $3 million and they, that's not restricted, and we can, we can, we can give that to them, and the budget would be like, they can show that they lost that revenue.
Because they're not, they're not city entities. I mean, they're in city facilities, but they're not city entities.
The other thing to remember is the 35 million that we've been able to claim as lost revenue does not include their loss revenue. That's the city.
That's just the city's calculation on what qualifies for revenues, so.
We're carrying our loss with them.
Yeah. Also included in.
Is that what they asked for? Was 750, both of them?
They would all like to see more.
Yeah, they probably.
Can I just say about the Bravo, since I'm on board, the Bravo money is going to be directly allocated to Des Moines for programs for the art for the kids. So that money will not go into their pool. It's going to be for programming for Des Moines.
The Bravo.
Yeah, Bravo would be spent on Des Moines programming, is what Connie is saying.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
And the Botanical Garden and the zoo, those benefit the people who live here. The things that they could do with that extra money would enhance all of our neighborhoods. It's good things going to improve the quality of life.
Was there an ask from the Botanical Center in the Blank Park Zoo?
I don't think so.
Oh, the question for council is the Botanical Center, this could be used to fund the commitment, right, that, or this could be, like we were talking earlier, access to.
What did you think that number was? Funding the commitment or was it additional?
The Botanical Center was actually funding the commitment, wasn't it, Nick?
I have to go back to my notes. I mean, I don't. We made a commitment to them already.
And the zoo is, I don't know what, I don't even know what commitment, Carl would know what commitment we have. He's on, I don't even know.
There's not.
But we've really made that commitment to the Botanical Garden before we even knew about ARPA funds.
Right.
Because we own the building.
Right.
And we've got a 50-year-old.
HVAC.
HVAC system that, that was going bad, and that's why we funded them an extra, what, million? I don't remember the number.
Four, I think.
Pardon me?
I think it was about a million four.
And that was over multiple?
Over 10 years.
10 years, so this would be able to get them their money sooner.
Yeah, this would help them get it that much sooner.
Now, there's clear recognition here that if we gave 750 to the Botanical Garden, Botanical Center to get their money sooner, that the zoo would have a similar.
And I think they should.
Well, we have, we have three buildings there. Well, I guess two buildings because a wind took down the other building that they need to, in Fort Des Moines, for their master plan to.
I would hope they would put.
To have a new entrance, so.
Those are good things.
Is, is, is this part of us taking down the, because we own those buildings at the fort, so that's our responsibility.
We funded the demo.
We would fund the demo and this would just be a.
And actually, the Blitz on Blight was part of the attempt to.
The Blitz on Blight would take down some of those buildings.
Yes, they could.
I mean, I.
That'd be a good source.
I just think, I just think both of them, they.
That, that would be a way that I would be more comfortable supporting the zoo and using the Blitz on Blight.
Okay, that's good.
If that was.
Good to know.
Taking, taking some off the 5 million and giving it to the zoo and the Botanical Center, or is that, is that what you're saying?
The zoo for demoing.
The, so Blitz on Blight, if we've got a, if part of our long-term commitment is to demo buildings, that would be a, an example of a building demolition that had a use afterwards because it would help facilitate the long-term master plan with a partner, right?
And save us from missing debt.
I mean, one blew down in a heavy windstorm. That's how bad it is.
Yeah.
It wasn't the worst, though.
We're waiting, we're waiting for the, we had a, we had a verbal agreement six years ago to take them down, and now we've had to start over through Shippoe and to take the others down. So I think we're getting there, Carl.
But we'll still have to pay.
We still have to pay, but there's going to be, you know they're going to add things on to this. And this is the Fort Des Moines that we are responsible for. It is our, it is our responsibility. And there is buildings in there that probably need to be either rehabbed or, I mean, there's the building on Army Post Road that's just boarded up. I mean, I don't know what we're going to do with that.
So have we hit the list for Monday?
So are we not, we decided not to give those two entities more money? We're not going to do that.
I don't think we decided that.
More than the 750?
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, you can, you can take, you can take, you can make that an even 10 million off the housing and commercial projects and take 250 and give it to both the Blank Park Zoo and the Botanical Center and make it an even million dollars that you would give them both.
But you're taking money from NFC and NDC? That's the 10 and a half?
I'd take from Blitz on Blight.
You said you were only giving 600,000 to NFC and NDC?
No, no. Six million of the 10 and a half was already commitments.
As long as we can work through with that with them.
Right, but then you have another four and a half billion for commercial projects and housing, right?
It's NFC and NDC that will receive those funds in addition to their usual 1 million a year. That 10 and a half will allow NDC to go to 2 million a year, and it'll allow NFC to go 1.5 a year for the three years. So all those dollars somewhat counted, unless you want to change it.
Well, how much do we put on Blitz on Blight with local option sales tax annually?
We do a combination of debt issuance and local option. Combination of it is 3.5-ish.
3.5?
Allocated a year, allocated that. We're maybe at the point where we don't need to be allocating those, the same number of dollars in terms of homes.
That's true.
And clearing the backlog, and so.
So why are we putting another 5 million in Blitz on Blight?
That commercial.
Well, but we're almost done with the home portion of it.
It's not that we're almost done.
No, we're not, because I've had a home that I got to look at every single day for the last three years, but I think we're close getting it through.
I think you're saying the same thing. Go ahead and take a little bit out of it.
Yeah, I would take a little bit out of Blitz on Blight. I would get, I would think, I'm sure that both of their revenue loss was probably well over a million dollars. The Blank Park Zoo and the Botanical Center, yes.
So I would like to find more dollars for housing before we increase other line items.
We don't even have any housing, I mean, you got, you got, you got 10 million dollars in there and I haven't seen one project. I mean, it's hard to increase something when you don't have, when you don't have it in front of you. I mean, that's, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, I'm not willing, I mean, I know what we've got with the two entities that provide a service for our residents in the region. We have one zoo in our state. We should be supportive of it. I have one, I have one amenity in my ward. I'm, I'm going to fight for that and hope that, they've lost more than a million dollars in revenue during COVID. They should be, we should, we should try, whether they got PPP money or whatever they got, we should try to get them whole as much as we can with these ARPA dollars.
It lifts up the whole city.
Botanical Center's the same way. I mean, I'm asking for 250,000 more. You take 500, so you got 450 out of the Blitz on Blight. You got 4.5 million Blitz on Blight, and you give the Blank Park Zoo and the Botanical Center a million dollars apiece.
But let me, we need to make sure on our list that when we give funds to our nonprofit partners, do they have to expend the funds within a certain date, or is it good enough?
I believe they have to do it within a certain.
I'm sure, I'm sure that both of them could find a use before 2026 to expend a million dollars in funds, because I know they're looking at expansions in both of them. Wouldn't you agree, Carl?
Well, yes, expansions and, and upgrades, just to change the filters in the.
Seals.
Seals is $5 million.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And they both offer educational programs. You talk about things for kids to do, you know.
And they employ, and they employ a lot of.
Yeah, they employ people.
Kids between the ages of 14 and 18 years old.
It, it's going to be.
They might not pay more than $10 an hour, but they're children that we're talking about.
It's going to be hard to find the donor who wants to donate $5 million for a new filter system. It's not, it doesn't have a ring to it like a building or something, but anyway.
Can I go down and see my name on that?
So there are.
Yeah.
So for Monday, I want to go back to that, because this is what we have to have is the buckets, but then I'd like to spend just a couple minutes on the allocations that need to occur quickly, or, and I'd like to still do this Monday if possible, the parking enterprise line item that we've talked about.
Yep.
Can we leave that on for Monday at the three and a half?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that, that was affected. I mean, the parking fund took the biggest hit during COVID.
There is, Nick helped me, the 1.1 greenhouse.
Yep, in the greenhouse, it's with, within the actual cost of greenhouse plus 250 towards the solar array design as well.
Is that coming out of the facilities allocation or the?
That would be the solar panel, the design work for that. The 850, I think, was under, I don't remember if it was under the parks or if it was under facilities. I have to look.
So is both the city facilities, there, all the energy is going to be ran off of solar panels? Is that how that works?
The two facilities.
Just for the garden.
And the greenhouse and the animal control.
And the animal control.
Those would be sized. Those would be sized and we think that's between 3 and 4 million, hopefully closer to the 3 million.
And that would effectively pay us back over the next.
12 to 15 years depending on rate.
Right, and so over the long run, that'll free up dollars in our operating budget.
And then the other transfer that was scheduled for Monday as well is the first allocation of the North Side Community Center as well.
But 2 and a half million?
I think it was 2 and a half, yeah.
Okay, and that's for design?
Uh, that would be, I, um, that's what we put in the, in the budget for transferring to have enough funds if we started, started construction anytime during fiscal year 23 or any of the cost of the project. We have multiple funds, funding going into the project, so it's there ready for whenever it starts.
We're not starting construction for two years.
There, there's other costs that we have within, with the, the, the design work and some, some of the suns, yeah.
A lot of, we have to hire an.
2 and a half million dollars off that? We gotta allocate upfront?
That's kind, that, we usually.
He said, he said, he said we have to.
That's based off, that was based off of, uh, we, we tend to fund as we, uh, as we originally planned for unless we have, unless some other direction needs to happen. So we tend to fund projects before we actually expend them. So, uh, we wouldn't have to do the 2.5, but we were doing other transfers at that time and tried to match up with what we originally budgeted within the, uh, within the CIP.
What, what's it, does it get transferred into parks? Apartment? Is that what you're doing?
It's going into.
Do we have someone?
It goes into a parks CIP, yes. It does go into the capital project funds that can only be used for capital projects. So it would, it would sit in that fund ready for expense.
Not used before the next fiscal year, then is it?
It stays there.
It stays there.
It stayed there. Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't, yeah. Project funds remains within the projects.
They don't get them.
And then is, how does the water trails? How does the 3 million work if, if Scott and, and Harriet are the two regional features that were, they're going to focus on? This has to be allocated before 2026?
Well, committed by 24.
Committed by 4.
Committed in 24, but it has to be spent by 26, so.
I, I'm with Joe. I mean, this is not something that I would, this, this is another area, like when, when I talk about a place where I would put housing.
So.
Or, or other dollars.
But this one may be a good one to just leave there it for a while.
Yeah, I understand.
If we get committed to it, you're going to ask me to go borrow debt or something of that nature. And I'd rather have these funds sitting there for at least the next year until they figure out exactly this is what they're doing with water trails.
Figure it out.
Is that fair enough? It's, it's a high probability those funds are going to be reallocated to other priorities.
Do we have money now allocated for the, the, the parks and for the amenities outside of the water for Scott and Harriet? Do we already have that allocated in our CIP? Because I know that.
That's what this is intended.
Do, do we have any of that allocated in our CIP?
That's all separate.
That's all. And while there's one, what was it? Really small.
But we knew that we had to do basically the trails and the stuff along Scott Street. So the, the out-of-water amenities, we always knew we had to do that on Scott Street. That was ours. We weren't putting a parking lot in. We weren't putting a bathroom in. But we always knew that our amenities was outside of Scott Street that we were responsible for. That's not the 6 million that we.
Which amenities are you talking about, Joe?
Well, I would say, you know, I, the trail to get down to go fishing, that's, that's.
Oh, that's all part of the, the project that Icon is building. That is all part of their project. Yes, there's the in-water feature and there's the out-of-water feature. So that's all the trail to get down to fishing and the, the little, yeah, yes.
Okay.
They're cutting back. The plan is to cut back on the Harriet Street site. It's not going to be as large as it was. Um, we haven't seen those plans. Those won't bid until next year anyway.
But those are just out-of-water. I mean, that's where you're going to get out of the water at, right? I mean, that's really, it's going to be a parking lot and we said that we would do the street improvements uh, through there, correct? That was, that was going to be our.
No, we maintain it though. They took it out of the project. There hasn't been a commitment to put anything back in.
No, we, we, we said we would have to, what's, what's the street that's, uh, is it, it's Harriet Street?
Oh, we're doing Harriet as part of the animal control. As part of animal control, we're doing Harriet. Yes.
But that's.
And then is it East 15th too? Part of that?
That is not part of the project, no.
Okay.
But see, that's an example that I think we're going to get pressure to improve that once people.
Sidewalks, streets, all the amenities, that third area doesn't have those today.
We knew that, I mean, we knew we had to do, that was, we knew we were going to have to do Harriet. We, we knew that we.
Harriet Street, just the right away, yes.
Right. And so that Harriet Street is going to need repaved. Now, there's two buildings down there that maybe might fall into that commercial.
I know what you're talking about.
Tear down. It's been vacant for, I don't know, 15, maybe 20 years. La Pizza House has been empty. And then there's another building that sits there.
It's got a building to the south of it that I went by today that just looks awful.
Yeah, there's another building right there on Harriet. So, okay, so all of the, so the only thing that's not included is any bathrooms or any parking lot.
Correct. The parking lot at Harriet is still supposed to be retained, but there's no parking provided at Scott.
Which.
And no bathrooms at either.
We own that triangle that Mullet uses, correct, for their parking and, and the, and the principal park.
Because I think we're leasing, we're leasing it to them for use or something.
I don't think you lease anything. I think.
We own it. I don't know what arrangements.
There is no arrangement. They're just able to use it. Fine. I mean, if that's what we want to do. I think a lot of people park there and use the trail too.
There's also planned developments and, um, construction activity before we can even get into the development, so.
But we, we don't plan on paving that parking lot, correct, yet?
No.
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 I, I didn't think that was part of what we were dealing with.
No.
Okay. So the 3 million here, we can leave it in there, but.
Yeah, hopefully it becomes available to be reallocated.
Yeah, I would say probably both. We'll see.
What, what additional guidance do you need for Monday? And, and just to be clear, we could summarize again what, we're going to see the document.
This is it, yeah.
We're, we're going to see what's on the screen in front of us, the overall buckets.
Are, are you okay with this target instead of not to exceed?
Yeah, we could.
Because I, it just, it doesn't have to be not to exceed because it's not like we're issuing debt for each one of these. This is just giving us the guidance, continue.
To, to fill, to fill in the details within these.
I mean, you've got 30, I mean, you listed 35.8 million dollars and now you have 38.5 million dollars here. Unless I did my math wrong, on the sheet you gave me, it was 35.8 million. And I could have did the math wrong, Nick. Did I do the math wrong?
They're, all of them are only off by about a million-ish. When I did the not to exceed, it's off by about a million, anywhere from a half million to a million and a half. Give me a buffer about a million.
Big number.
Sure. And then the three items we just talked about that are going to advance quickly with transfers. And then, uh, additional conversations with school district and potentially others, but I just, I'm not aware of other childcare that are going to fit.
And infrastructure improvements include no streets, correct?
Correct.
Then we can't use it for streets, is that correct?
Well, you have to use part of the 35 million.
The unrestricted, the non-restricted category, the loss of revenue because streets aren't part of the restricted.
Infrastructure is restricted. We've got almost 30, 30-plus million in unrestricted. We could use it. Okay, um, so.
Versus 30 plus.
Sorry. It, it's not, it's not on there. That, that was just that first part of the presentation where there was restricted and non-restricted.
Each one of these is split between restricted. You don't see.
Yeah, you don't see the breakout.
Can you, can you, can you show us that? Can you give us a breakout of what's restricted, non-restricted of these categories?
We're kind of still working with what, to make sure that we're following that because that, that number might change. Um, just because it's based off of fixed fiscal year loss. We, it's a four, four years worth of calculation. The first two years is about that 30, 35 and we're about to finish another fiscal year. So that number might change over, uh, over the course of this, maybe fall to where we would have a number of how it would break out. And when you're, when we're talking about that, there's, there's still, we're still working with, um, uh, legal and when we work with, uh, the different entities, we'll have to figure out if it works for what product, what, what we're trying to go forward with, with them, does it fall into the restricted versus non-restricted? And we have to kind of track that as we go to make sure, uh, we don't go over our non-restricted amounts.
Okay, well, I, I, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see how the money's broken down by ward where I'm comfortable voting for anything on Monday and how these things are going to be used.
It, it's not realistic to get a breakdown by ward.
Uh, you could do a lot of the, the parks, the trails, the side, you could do quite a bit, quite a bit of it by ward. And if you have some neighborhood commercial revitalization, uh, things that we're looking at for the 500,000 NFC, NDC projects where they're listed at.
Um, I know the ones that are in works now.
Yeah, that's fine. And I know a lot of, some of that's.
So where it's available, we can provide you where the ward.
Yeah, absolutely can.
Yeah, but even the parks, we'll have to work with them to identify that list of which ward they're in.
And then, so then you'll include the trail section that I, that I, uh, threw out there?
I mean.
The Gaily Wilson, uh, connection?
It'll be part of the discussion.
Part of the discussion or part of what we're voting on on Monday?
We're voting, we're voting on the buckets, Joe. We're not voting on specific line items yet.
So we're going to bring back the whole park list and trail list.
I don't know if I'm, I'm comfortable voting on the buckets, Josh. I'm, I'm sorry.
And that, and that's fine. You don't have to be comfortable.
Pro temp, you're, you're, you're trying to pressure me into being comfortable with these, these totals here and I, and I don't think I have enough information. So if you don't mind me asking a few more questions.
You're, you're, you're fine to ask questions, but, but I don't, I don't think it is reasonable. We should be respectful of staff and I think this process, it, it is another ward council member. I don't think we need to break these things down by ward.
Yeah.
And I think we need to, we need to try and move this forward and figure out how we move this forward and where in this process, some of these questions are best addressed. And having additional detail later in the process, I think makes, makes sense and it's the best use of everyone's time, but.
Well, as a ward, as a ward councilman, I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask for that information before I vote on it and because I have to answer to my constituents and that's who, that's who I represent. And I need to look at them and say, you got your fair share of the ARPA funds. Now, you can do whatever you want as your ward councilman and, and that's fine, but I, I'm, I'm going to treat that a little differently. So I appreciate your input on that, Mayor Pro Temp, but I am going to get that information and I am very respectful of staff and their time. But I don't think that's a hard, a hard thing for them to do.
Well, under, with what we have knowledge on.
Right.
But trails and priority sidewalks, we're not going to know exactly which ones are going to.
Well, you know what priority ones? We know what we're going to do with the 4.5. I mean.
No way, no way. We don't. You got to understand, we don't. We're going to have to look at priority ones with the other funding we have. And say now we're going to get further down the list, but it, those are not fully identified beyond the next two years. And this will require that.
Okay, well, I mean, we're.
I just want, because this is Connie. So by Monday, you want all that information, Joe?
If we're voting on something on Monday, I mean, we've had, we've had, we, we, we haven't had any discussions ever about this other than maybe one-on-one conversations with Scott, maybe a few conversations with you. We have a public meeting on Thursday and we're supposed to vote on how we're going to do the buckets on Monday. I'm not comfortable with that. I'm sorry.
Okay, I, I don't know how they would ever break it down by Monday because we don't even, if we're tying it with all the other money too, like sidewalks and trails.
I tell you what I'm fine on is voting for the parking fund because I know that was, that, that was part of this. The other, the other ones, we have no reason to push this until Monday to figure out what we have to do. Do we? I mean, are we under some time crunch?
Only those three.
Well, two of the three would be right away and we were trying to.
Yeah, what's the two, what's the two out of the three?
The greenhouse funding.
No problem.
And the parking funding and then the third one would have been the north, the North Side Community Center.
Installation of.
Okay, well, there's, there's the three. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll vote for those, but I want the other information before I'm voting for anything. And I think everyone else should be asking for the same thing and make sure we have the information. There's no reason that we have to vote for these buckets, uh, Monday. I think we need to have more conversations for sure.
Some of these specific, because I know the Tidom Village, they really need to get something done. And if it's in the bucket, then we could come and vote on that specifically.
We could vote on the Tidom, the Tidom project on Monday if we all agree upon it.
Okay.
I mean, that.
I mean, that's.
I've been down this road. I've sat here for eight years. I know when we vote on something, it's difficult to change. And whether you guys have seen it, I've seen it and I'm not going to be, I, this is too big of a thing to be pushed in, you know, three days to say, yeah, these are the right buckets, but hey, listen, you can change it, but you just got to go through another vote. I'm not doing that. I've been down this road before. I'm not. So you, if you want to put up for vote, I'll be the only no vote and that'll be fine and everyone will know why and we'll just move on. But I will vote for those three items that you do need clarification on Monday. I have no problem with that.
Manager, do you have sufficient guidance for the next few days?
I need to talk to the two council members through my presence.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, Councilmember Bozen, do you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Anyone else?
Yep.
Thank, thank you all for your time. I know this was a little longer than people maybe anticipated, but I think it was, it was needed. So.
You better quit hacking. They're all coughing.